It is six o'clock on August sixth nineteen nineteen twenty twenty-four. We'll bring this regular town board meeting to order. Roll call. Hendrickson is absent. Kramer is here. Ferguson?
No.
Coontz?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate your attendance and your inputs. Let's stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call for changes, review of the agenda.
So before I have, I just have one thing that I was supposed to share with you guys from Vicky. She emailed this to me and asked me to share with the board and the citizens and our attorney. Okay, based on the direction of the B, that the BOT is taking regarding non-conformity to ordinances by the Board of Trustee members, past members and employees. In addition to the blatant disregard pertaining to the conflict of interest issues, I find myself questioning why I'm serving on a board I no longer respect, believe in, or wish to be a part of. The disregard for ordinances, the picking and choosing of ordinances, much less the citizens you're forcing them upon, is a true injustice to the citizens. At this point, my moral standards and beliefs are being tread upon. I no longer choose to serve on a board I no longer believe in nor want to be involved with due to the deceit, truth twisting, and manipulation pertaining to all levels being represented by the board. I believe fair for one is fair for all. Therefore, I am resigning from the Board of Trustees effective Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand four. Vicky Hendrickson.
Okay. Thank you. So then, well, our attorney's not here. Do, we can't, we can accept it, no?
We can't because it's not on the agenda? Can we add, we haven't added anything to that.
Oh, true.
Can you add, that's one of them.
Well, we will add it and when the attorney comes, we'll make sure that it's legal to do so. Okay, any other changes of the agenda? Anybody has?
The only one I noticed is just under planning and zoning, um, item seven D. That first parcel number should be nine three two seven. It was just a, sorry about that. Trans, oh, the two numbers.
Oh, uh-huh, I see you.
I just.
And actually, we can take, um, seven B off of there.
Okay, remove that. Or we'll just pen, we'll just pen that until next meeting, right?
Anybody else, anything else? I take a motion to accept the agenda?
Can we make a motion, we accept the agenda as it is?
As it was changed?
Yes, as it, yeah, as it was.
As it was changed.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. Special items, meeting protocol. We know what they are. You've all heard them before. Let's all be nice. Consent calendar, approval of the July sixteenth meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the July sixteenth meet, regular meetings. Minutes, sorry, I forgot my quote.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Conflict of interest. Declare it when it's, when it is an item that you are in and shouldn't be in, please. Engineer, gee, Anthony, that's you, huh?
That's right. So, um, I'll give you the summary. I wrote a memorandum on July eighteenth. I don't know if you've got it back yet. But, um, I'll just read out, uh, you know, what I wrote on, uh, July eighteenth. But I laid out, uh, all our water and sewer projects, kind of how the deadlines are going, and what we've accomplished so far, what we're gonna accomplish, and, you know, the future milestones for each project. So the first one's the lagoon expansion and wastewater treatment plant. So, um, we, we might have discussed this in a past meeting, but we coordinated with, uh, the state and FEMA Regen Eight to secure a written determination that no plumber is necessary for the lagoon expansion and wastewater treatment plant. Um, due to the hydraulic model of Battle Creek diversion not rising more than one foot during the two hundred year flood. So, uh, the rise is actually, uh, point oh three feet, which is pretty much negligible, it's less than an inch. So, um, the last, uh, component of the environmental clearance, um, on our side was the desktop review of the wetland delineation. So there was some question about some potential wetlands. Using some historical aerials and whatnot, we determined that it's really 'cause we were doing irrigation from our lagoons. So what sometimes people think is a wet area all the time that's naturally wet is actually manmade, 'cause we're constantly irrigated, uh, from the lagoons. So we were able to get that through clear, uh, clearance on the nineteenth. So our final engineering report, plans and specifications went in on the thirty-first. And, um, now we're supposed to be getting environmental clearance in DNR by the end of this month. So August thirtieth. That would give us an expected loan closing of the end of September and a bid phase in October. So we're almost a month and a half early on that one. So without any delays, so, so far, so good. Um, contractor selection, November, that's gives us a month ahead of the deadlines. Water facilities review, and this kind of ties into the second item, um, but I can go through it. We're currently doing a water system model. This is a printout of our model. It's color coded based on pipe size. It gives you an idea that where our big pipes are versus small pipes, it kind of gives you an idea of the size of our system as well, 'cause sometimes that's hard to fathom, knowing it's all underground, right? So, um, so, um, that provide us with the deficiencies of impending, that are, uh, impeding our fire flow through the town. And, um, we wanna provide solutions to fix the fire flow issue, which is eligible, uh, using the ARPA grant, uh, provided by Custer County. So, um, recapping the difference between our approved drinking water loan from the state and the Custer County grant is that the Custer County grant can be used for all deficiencies in our water system, but the SRF loan can only be used for everything but fire flow. So they have a rule at the state level, they don't let you use their money for fire flow. Fire pressure is okay, but not fire flow. So, uh, that being said, the ARPA money has to be allocated in year mark by the end of the year versus the loan has more time associated with it. It's appro, it's approved to the town of Hermosa and it's for ours to take, right? But it's a loan, so low in, very low interest, but, um, so being that, as it may, we, we focused on the fire flow deficiencies of, you know, the town. And, um, actually, we've completed, we've completed our first run of the model and I've done some calibration. I was doing it as of like four o'clock today, verifying that what our model says pressures are, you know, with Chuck and some historical data, uh, that that actually matches what they're seeing by doing fire testing, right? So they've done some, Earl Waters done some. So we're trying to pick these points where they've done it and say, okay, I got this. What did the, what did the field testing say they got? So, and I'll recap, uh, some examples of that. So that's where I'm here today, um, getting comments on our proposal, um, before I head back to Custer, or before I head to Custer County for the first time. Because of the, I believe it's because of the Republican primary, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically the election here. And, uh, they, uh, they, uh, canceled their meeting tomorrow. So I'm on the twenty-first agenda, which is the next first meeting I could get on. So I'll be back here before, the day before to, to give you another update, 'cause now I'll have, the technical memo will have a summary of the deficiencies on a map by that time. So, um, but what we're proposing though is, and that's where we can kind of look at this water map. So we ran it as is and then we tried it with a tank at the top of that, of that line. I had survey go do elevation shots at every one of these green dots in the town. So I know what all those elevations are. And our system right now has, uh, two tanks, but over, it's actually almost a half a million gallons, 'cause there's a third tank there. It's just not being used. It's under, under the surface, you can't see it. It's about fifty thousand gallons in that, and about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons in the two tanks that you see. But their elevation is thirty-four oh seven. So, um, versus the bluff that's at the end of the Long Cayo water main line is at thirty-four twenty-two point eight. So it's a good twenty feet plus, uh, from that surface to the surface at the top of that bluff. So with that being said, we have fifty-six foot tanks there. And if we just modeled a twenty-three, twenty-four and a half foot tank up there, 'cause obviously we have a budget, right? So I can't just, I could do anything, right? If I had a limited budget, but, but the budget of the Custer County, uh, grant, we would be able to duplicate the pressures that we see at the Dollar General currently without having any tanks here by putting a tank at the end of the Long Cayo. In other words, um, at the north end, if we put a tank of a hundred and twelve thousand gallons, I could duplicate, we could basically have the line that's under the highway. If it broke or it got cut, I would still be able to provide all the same pressures and fire flows that we currently provide, having that one eight inch line under the highway. We still have some deficiencies in pressure. So my model and in reality showed that there was only eighteen PSI at the end of that line. And we need to have forty-five. So twenty-five during the fire, they'll allow it to go down to twenty-five, but forty-five on a normal day. So that tank obviously then, that you have water right there for the volume side. But forty-five then now is at Dollar General. So that'd be the first, the first business, right? Well, the storage units, this is the same thing, forty-five. But then you still have deficiencies when you get down with, with just the one, uh, source of water. You have twenty-eight PSI like at the southern driveway of the gas station. Or the fire station has twenty PSI. So those are things that we wanna correct. And so there's two ways to do that. You can, well, there's only one way to do it and keep the volume, and that's to have a tank. You can do pressure increases with boosters, but then you can't push that volume through at that pressure, right? Without having the water in reserve. So I'll give you an anecdote. Uh, we had a power plant in a small town of four thousand people. The power plant served all of like northern metro Detroit, right? It was huge. So we had to have two and a half million gallons of water in reserve in case the power plant pot fired. So that was a big deal, 'cause the water's getting, it gets stale, right? So you have to make sure that you have enough in the design to replenish it. You know, you only let it drop two feet and it fills back up. So that brings chlorine back into the system. And so there's a lot in the operational way of, of running it, which is in controls that we can do, because our tanks currently are fed by a dedicated line from the well. With only one well, the other well's inactive. The only way to have the volume of water we need at any one moment is storage. 'Cause never with the well, I mean, you take water out, where's it coming from, right? So either you have it in reserve or you have it, you're producing it, right? From the aquifer. So obviously with our well two still, I'm still discussing all that with the drillers and how we're gonna do that, or if we're gonna repurforate first or, or whatever. You know, we're still trying to figure out the best approach to bring to you. We need to have, we need to have a solution that's a guaranteed one. And that's, that's why I think, um, going the route of a tank at the end of that line, which gives us another almost twenty-five feet of just ground surface elevation without designing a tank for higher elevations, um, provides that, provides that redundancy. So you have the redundancy in your well, but then you still only get whatever the well produces, be it sixty-eight gallons per minute or, um, a hundred gallons a minute or something in that ballpark, versus a hundred and twelve thousand gallons over a two hour period would give you, you know, almost a thousand gallons per minute you need for a residential fire. It's hard to, it's hard to, to beat that. So, um, so that's basically, um, where we're at with the, the model. That was kind of the second agenda item, so I kind of jumped down to it, 'cause it was in my, in my list here, the memorandum. So what I'd like to do is be able to go to Custer County and ask them if they'd allow us, um, to utilize that money towards that infrastructure investment, knowing that we have the SRF loan for the WRT and for whatever we're gonna do to maximize our well two, which could end up being just the sixty-eight GPMs if the board doesn't wanna, if the, if we can't guarantee perforations, we'll bring the water back. Because what happens when you drought the well is that the grout goes under pressure and it'll go out from the casing, depending on the geological formation. And when you go back and you try to shoot through that grout again, if the grout had gone past the casing farther than the, than the shot can, can reach, you won't reopen it. That's it, it's done. So that's the issue. I don't wanna take us down a very expensive road with no guarantee of success, right? So it's better to have an investment with a high, with a low risk and a high guarantee of success. That's my motto. So with that being said, if we get a quote at least for put, replacing well two instead of even putting any more money into it, then I can bring that back to you as a decision. But that again, would then fall, that takes time. Actually, the drillers, I call Kim Taylor. Sometimes he'll come the, the same day, sometimes he'll come a week and a half later. Depends what he's doing, right? He'll be out in the middle of nowhere drilling, so, but he comes, he always does. He's never let me down. So I wanna show him our location there, what we've got going on, have him come out here. And then there is another location within the quadrant that's in, uh, that township has property. I don't have that ready, but I can bring that on the twentieth to show you. Um, but our well, when you drill a well, the state doesn't care about the exact address of that well. It's anywhere in that quarter quadrant. So the southwest of the southwest of that township, that section, that's all they care about. So it could be anywhere within forty, forty acres of that well and it's still considered the same well. So there's two pieces of property that owns in that forty acre, uh, quarter section. One is where it's located now, where the tanks are. And the other is what's called a public park in the northeast of that quadrant at the end of Third Street. Now that's in the flood plain. There's a little sliver of it, enough for a wellhead, potentially. That would, that would be an option, right? Potentially an option. Now, I want, before I even kind of wave that out there, I wanna make sure that I confirm that with the driller, right? That he's comfortable with that location as well, before we even consider it. So that's kind of why that's taking longer than the timeline we have for this Custer County grant. 'Cause, you know, we're August, so September, October, November, December. I have to select a contractor for whatever we're spending that money on, right? So that's why I don't wanna get in a, in a, in a trick situation where, you know, we're trying to last minute rush something. That's why I'm compartmentalizing these things into guaranteed solutions that can be within that budget, that accomplish that infrastructure. I mean, a tank free for the town of over a hundred thousand gallons is a pretty, pretty decent deal, right? So that's why I presented that.
So how much will that tank cost?
So I have a cost estimate, I think I have it in there. So there, it's from Texas. And it's a, I, I chose as a first choice, uh, first option, a corrugated tank. I actually have a picture of what it would look like.
Yeah.
Reminds me of a grain bin, an old grain bin.
It does.
Yeah.
Um, it comes with a thirty year warranty. And the per, the price of construct, constructing it was in the cost from the guys from Texas. So they must go around like bin builders and, and build those tanks. I mean, they probably use the same, same equipment, the same crew. It's just then a guy comes, crew comes behind him and puts a liner. But it's galvanized, so galvanized is supposed to last for seventy years without five percent, less than five percent degradation. So.
How many years?
Seventy. Galvanized by definition is seventy years. So, so that's an option. Obviously, I'd love to spend more time optimizing that design and I will have that much time to look at a couple other options. Maybe I can get some more height for the same price. That'd be nice. So, so this is kind of my first swing at it, getting the actual solid prices. I got a quote actually from, from the guys in Texas, so. So that's the, the tanks and then the well two summary, um, that are covered. The syphon is the sewer extension. And that's all that needs to be done to the sewer extension to be approved by DNR. And, um, so we're in survey on that. So I've had to do all the control to make sure that the lagoons could be built correctly in the right location. So then that brought us to the water and now we're at the syphon. So my survey team's probably heading to the syphon location this week, coming up. So that will give me all the data we need. And that'll be quick. We could probably have that completely designed in less than two weeks. So that'll get us in for, uh, a construction phase in about November, December, which is fine. Now we gotta look at maybe some financing options or funding options. Uh, maybe the state can, can help us out given the progress we've made. So that's where we wanna circle back to them. And I think they are, I mean, I've just kind of noticed a tonal difference in, in things. So they're, they're starting to pay attention to us, I think. And so I think by the time I have that shovel ready, I can see, hey, what options can you guys provide us in the way of funding? You know, there is CDS funding, so I don't know if you've ever tried to do that, but congressional directed spending applications go in the spring every year to our local congressman and then the year mark money to projects. So I've done that, I've always, I think we should think to be doing that, because, um, it's a situ, when, when they, when they do an appropriations bill, every single congressman and senator will say, hey, my district, I've got these really needy projects. And if they can get enough support between each other, they get, they get their projects into the appropriations bill. So I was able to get about six and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, I got another four million through CDS for communities. So, you know, try every angle, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Last, but not least is the WRT and the SRF. We did have, Terry and I had some, um, communications. There was some, I guess, maybe mixed messaging in terms of, um, we've given a grant back that was for a project that we weren't, not gonna pursue. I, I don't know much about it, 'cause it was kind of before my time, but I think it had something to do with the gumbo lily or something like that. So I think that got conflated with our WRT and those, the projects related to our well. So, um, I straightened it out with our, 'cause I've been in direct communication with Suzanne McKinley, who's our, um, DNR, um, SRF loan coordinator. So her, her job is to check every SRF loan that we do and make sure we're following all the rules. So I already had a call with her on, and, um, email correspondence on our drinking water loan, which is about two point two million. And I said, yeah, that's unrelated to that other project and so we're good. So I sorted it out on Monday, I sent Cal, the correspondent. Um, she's, she's got it all sorted out. There's no problem about reverting it back and all that stuff. So, um, she's gonna give us time. I told her that I'd give her some details in September. That way she's at least get a little bit of what we're doing, kind of maybe a summary of, of, you know, project summary, executive summary of, hey, we're gonna use this money for this, right? And you can see that it matches up completely with the description from the, the IUA, IUP, the Intended Use Plan from fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So, so that's pretty much it. We'll give her an update in September. By then I should have met with Kim Taylor and we should have an idea. We'll already discuss some stuff on the twentieth.
That's a lot of information, Anthony.
I tried to make it quick.
Yes.
And not jump around too much.
So basically, we're kind of almost just giving up the WRT?
No.
No.
On the contrary, um, we wanna design the WRT around the concentration of contaminants that we're gonna have. So if we have a well now that's got some layers capped off, then the contamination will be that much, right? But if you have a well that gets repurforated, 'cause the repurforating company, or the perforators out of Upton, Wyoming, gave a quota twenty-four thousand dollars to come here and put four hundred and thirty shots into our well two. And I said, well, let's, let's think about that for a minute, because, you know, he's just gonna come shoot and go home. You know, he's not promising any of it. And, um, so I said, all right, that's fair enough and, and he's honest. But let's say we, let's say we open it up another forty or fifty gallons per minute in areas that have higher concentrations of radionuclides. So then I need to pump that and as it's pumping out, I need to test it. And then I design the WRT around that. So that's kind of what I don't wanna jump the gun on, because I don't wanna have a system that's undersized for what we end up having. It needs to be exactly designed for its inflow, right?
And that, it changes too. So when you say it, it covers exactly what it is, when it actually changes, nature changes it, how will, how does that work then?
So obviously we would design for the worst case scenario, so the highest concentrations, you know, parts per million. But if it is cleaner, if it's coming out cleaner, then, you know, that's better. The system will perform better. It'll still be the same GPMs. You know, there's, there's, there's many things when you're, when you're dealing with water treatment other than just the, the one, the one test parameter, right? So, you know, you're also dealing with minerals, hardness, uh, ion concentrations that can affect the way a, uh, treatment plant operates. We kind of think that it'll be something like a sand filtration system, like what New Underwood has, just based on, they have similar experience in geology and issues. So from a cost estimate standpoint, we kind of have a first, first option. Um, and those aren't too expensive. We use them, actually, you saw one in Apple Springs, it was a big blue tank. And that was, that was treating wastewater, but, um, you know, the, we wanna, we don't want to, um, have something then that maybe treats just the one kind of buzz item, but then we have issues of color or we have issues of taste. 'Cause you're drinking this. It's not like, it's not like, yeah, it looks good in a glass, right? So then you got manganese and the taste weird, um, or you have other things. So, so that's, that's kind of why I'm taking a very cautious steps to drinking water, because, you know, you, you really gotta have a full picture of what you're dealing with to, to do a good job. So, yeah, that's why I kind of kept, kept that loan, kept it alive and we're keeping the state updated on it.
So as it is, if you get all the things that you think would best serve our town, uh, do you have any idea what that's gonna do to our water sewer bill?
So we have a model, actually. Uh, it's actually a working cash model that Terry and I developed with a company out of Canada called Waterware. We can see exactly our cash position today. We can project out forty years, fifty years, a hundred years, as far as you want out. At least we like to predict out the length of a loan. So before we even close on a loan or move in the direction of one, we would model that to make sure that the town is gonna be able to afford it. Uh, we have our current rate structure. We wanna see what in the next five years. Obviously, the goal is rate stability, right? So we don't wanna have huge rate increases, big spikes, things like that. You know, if you have some gradual things to track inflation at the very least, 'cause otherwise you're subsidizing your water supply, right? And your level of service. So level of service means... So level of service means that you only charge what it costs you to run the system. Basically like a nonprofit. And so that's exactly what the model tells us. Because, you know, as we have increases due to inflation, we, we track that. If we have some capital expenses like, like the investment in the, in the water system, then we track that. We have growth in the population and we track that. So there's a lot of things that come into play. Luckily, we're here with a, not a decreasing population. We're not faith, right? Where the population's decreasing, luckily, we're in an area of demand. So, so there is small increases we can count on in population that'll also help. So that's what we'll do. And then we'll, we'll bring that whole model. We can actually put up on the, on the overhead here when we got it ready and run those scenarios together live.
So you can't give me a guess now?
Guess of what?
How much money, how much the water bill is gonna go up, water and sewer. I mean, this is what the citizens complain about, you know? And I, and I understand they have not been sitting up here. They don't understand what we all understand, you know? They don't come to the meetings. They don't listen. They, you know, whatever. And that's not all of them. I realize that. We have our core crew that are, crew that's always here, you know? But when we have gone through this before, we have, you know, said, okay, by using the, paying for the WRT system, our water bill's gonna go up. This is just an example here. $10 a month, you know? And, and so on and so forth with every, with every project that we have looked at, you know? And I was hoping to get, before it's all totally researched and totally done, what that amount would be. I mean, none of us want to put the burden on ourselves or the town people, anybody, of, of doubling of the water bill, you know? We know that we are going to have to increase it. This we know. But we want to, we want to make the right decisions, you know, for the town and for the people in the town. Hard to take when, I don't care what city, what town, what person. You know, you increase the bill by 60 bucks. I'm just throwing out a number. Nobody knows anything yet. You know? In other words, I don't want to waste your time, your research, and, and the time for, for getting whatever source we can afford. So that's my thing there.
Right. And so, you know, obviously, we're, we're providing water now, right? We have an operable well. We have an operable drinking water system. So what we want to do is kind of leverage what we have and take a very like, kind of, I guess, well-developed approach to the investments that we take. And when we look at ones that cost us money, such as a loan versus grants, which are much easier to make a judgment on, then there needs to be a reciprocal benefit to the town, let's say, in potential business, right, that would come that would need water. I mean, obviously, we're in a water scarce area or irrigation, right? For example, in the, in the wastewater system, we're taking out a loan. But we're making the, the irrigation water to a level that it can be irrigated in the same area that it was before. So it has value, right? We're not trucking. So we're not spending that money to send it to hot springs. So, you know, there's a cost savings and then there's potential increase of, of water users, right? So that's kind of what a water system does to offset the cost of an investment that is a loan. And so when we're analyzing this investment of a second, the second well coming back online and being treated to the same quality as well one, then we want to say, well, then that's the cost. It's probably not gonna be the entire amount to do that. Then what's the benefit, right? So then what's the benefit to that that could potentially allow maybe more homes to be built or, you know, more, more people to be users and payers into the system, tap fees? And so, and, you know, making sure that a lot of that, we're doing that already. A lot of that is congruent with what other communities around us are paying, right? For their water and sewer. So, so we wouldn't let water and sewer go, you know, above what is, what is kind of commensurate for the area in terms of their water bill and their sewer bill. Because, you know, there has to be some fairness in the water rates. So that's how we'll look at it. And that's how we can model it with this cash model. So. We try to offset those costs.
So you believe you'll have that in September when you're, when you're done, a little before September?
I'll have, I'll have the, in September, I'll have a description of what we can, what we'll spend, like what we proposing to spend it on, right? So like kind of more defined. Because if it's in one location versus it's another, there's some pipe differences and things like that. So we'll have kind of an idea, general idea of the cost, you know, that what percent of that approved loan we'll probably need and what it's for. And that's what the state really is thinking about right now. Is that, you know, are they still, are they still following the project description? You know, that's what they're thinking. So I just want to put them at rest on that. But then Terry and I will have the time through the fall here to run these scenarios of, if we ran, if we did that kind of investment, what are the, what are the, what does that affect our revenue? How does that affect our operating maintenance costs? You know, is there lost, is there a lower operating maintenance cost, et cetera, right? So it's a bigger study when you, when you're stepping into a loan. But I kind of feel like it's, it's gonna take that much time to also figure out how to get a water treatment system right. So I put those two in the same time, in the same timeline.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
Is there anything you need from us right now, like a directive from us to, that, that you can go up to Custer County, for instance, and ask if we can use that money for the tank rather than anything else?
Yeah, I think that would be good. I mean, they've been pretty open about, you know, what we can use it for. So they've approved us for, for different uses in the past. And when I told them, well, what about this? They said, we just want to be asked, you know? So that would be the, that would be my request, yeah. If I can go to Custer County on the 21st, which I got out of the agenda by the 16th, I think, and ask them if we can use it for that. And I'll have a lot more data too. And I'll come, the day before, I'll come here, before I even go there. So.
All right. Well, can I kind of make the motion that we allow Anthony to go to Custer County on our behalf and ask them if we can use their grant money to, to fund the water tank?
We can. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, so we can have more discussion now. Any other board members, employees that have any questions on this? Chuck?
No, we've kind of went over it beforehand. The numbers that I'd seen before on a tank was about $2 a gallon. So when you're looking at the under 1,000 gallons, I had a couple thousand bucks on a tank. And that was from people that put up this last tank for us, those numbers came from. Now, that doesn't include the infrastructure going and coming. That's just the tank itself, the base and the internal plumbing and the tank itself. So.
And how long ago was that dollar amount?
Oh, it's been around 30 days ago.
30 days ago?
I had looked at trying to put another ring on this tank that's existing because it is a bolted tank to gain some more pressure. The height is where the problem is. We've got, we have to have the elevation to get the pressure.
And so that kind of started the thought process. Because we were talking about that leak. We were talking about putting a ring on. So that means 130,000 gallons is now out of commission. So putting another tank up would allow him to be able to take one, take one down for service. So that kind of started the whole thought. And then it became, okay, where would we put it? And, you know, where can we get another 20, 30 feet of elevation, et cetera? So.
Okay, good. Dan, I see you had your hand up.
Yep. It's always exciting to hear what we're doing for ideas, but there's always gonna be that but come into the situation too. And I think, you know, the SRF is a great situation, but it's all loan. There's no grant money there. And that's where the cost gets heavier on the town. And the 500,000 is all grant. It's our, it's free, you know? So that's why the WRT to me was so important to have that well back up and going. You know, we pump tested it. We log tested it. Yep, we lost volume on it. You know, brought it down to roughly that 50 gallon, 60 gallon a minute. But it was still able to be treated. And the testing that was done, it was able to be treated. So I think that's a big aspect on that side. The tower is exciting, and I wish you'd have been involved when we went to Kim Taylor and looked at that mile and a half off 79 site to put that in the new well to the Madison and provide everything here. You know, that would have been our ideal situation. It would have supplied everything we needed and put us in a great circumstance for storage as well as water and covered us forever. But I think the other thing to be remembered is we've lost our ability to serve out of town people. We can only serve our in corporate limit people. We're done. You know, Southern Black Hills water has sewn that up. So the monies that we're gonna spend now are gonna be all on just the in-town people. There's not gonna be any new development other than what's in the corporate limits now. And that isn't gonna be enough to do what we need to do. If we spent a lot of time on investigating anything, it's how to poke a hole in us being able to still serve the immediate people for development within our three mile jurisdiction is what the state law says. I feel that's where we need to go, to be able to do that and drive that. Then the tank makes sense. Then the situation for our volumes, pressures and development makes sense. Because then we can take and drive these costs away from our in-town people and drive it on to the new development and standardize it from there. So that's where I have difficulties because we're limited to this ball right now. We're not able to go out of that ball because it's Southern Black Hills water.
Okay, go ahead, Anthony.
If I'm allowed, because.
Yes, go for it.
Huge historic knowledge. So the, the city limits, I mean, I just look at it from a guy that wasn't here, but then I go on Beacon and I look at our parcel maps and I look at how the town limits are highlighted. And I see that there's a little strip that goes up to the north. And then there's a big rectangular piece that's considered Hermosa that's Preston, right? So technically, that's in our city limits, isn't it?
No, it's in the city limits with Long Kyle. But the judge ruled that they, Southern Black Hills water, get to serve that development. So they took that away from us, which is why our Northwater sewer line was focused on that area. That's the harmful portion of it. I, I feel your tower and your ideas and everything would have been awesome if we'd have kept Long Kyle. Because that was 400 units that it was gonna be changed to. It was originally 200. Then when Mr. Hig got involved, then it was gonna go to 400 and do lot sizes well. Then that makes all the difference in the world for the community. And would definitely weigh in on the tower, hit us everything we need for the infrastructure and the Northwater sewer line that's there could be utilized and everything put in a better circumstance all that way. So that's where that equation needs to happen. If we could serve Long Kyle, Hermosa Hills.
So my thoughts are that, so you have a, a line going up there, an eight inch line. It's all approved by the state. It was all done right. We're gonna put a tank on the end of that, right? And it's on the bluff. It's in a good elevation. And we have a purpose for it that serves the town. Obviously, the, the kind of ups and downs when it comes to the rural water and if they can have customers and what part of, of the area that's been annexed is, can we serve and not serve and things like that? Things change over time, right? And if you, if you look at other court case precedents such as Watertown or Yangtze, you'll see that they did, they did have the same thing happen to them, right? That the rural water said, well, we, we have our federal support, so we have the right to serve it. And I believe it was Watertown said, well, we're gonna serve it. We're just gonna have to, those are our customers. We're not, we, so there was legal rights of the town. It's just that they had to appease the rural water system when it came to their, them making their kind of financial numbers make sense, right? So there needed to be some kind of financial arrangement that would satisfy to both parties. But that didn't mean that the town didn't have its water users and water residents, right? And weren't billing those people, right? So we have to see how that evolves. Because there's, there's trying to do stuff past our, past that up to, is it, huh? How do you pronounce that?
Dagenbach.
Yeah, Dagenbach, yeah.
Dafenbach.
Dafenbach. So the correct German pronunciation. So.
Your relatives know how to spell, how to pronounce it.
I don't have to say Volkskamanschaft. But, but no. So, so that kind of, we'll see how that all evolves, right? And if they're able to do that. I mean, they have a well that's same production level as our well. So I mean, it sounds really big and scary that a rural water. But when I talk to their engineers, Long Branch, they sent me the drawings of what their system is around us. It's just a well and a small subdivision, Lindsay Loop. That's rural water.
However.
We'll have to see how that all plays out as well. And that, it's kind of a time will tell with the way they do things.
I won't argue with you. However, they have almost endless pockets. And, and.
But remember what I said. Water is not a moneymaker necessarily, right? It's supposed to be a level of service. So they, there's only so much they could squeeze people and say, we need to, you need to pay us for water, right? So it's not like a Pepsi-Cola factory is coming in, you know? Then it's a different story. If it's just water residents, you know, they have to be paying commensurate amounts of, of bill, you know, revenue that our town people are paying. So it's kind of a fallacy to think that it's a moneymaker per se, you know? And so I think the only reason that they even have a chance at all is if there's federal subsidies. Without that, it's a little, they're kind of in a weaker position than we are.
I don't buy that, Anthony. Sorry. I, I've been involved in this in, for quite a while. I'll get to you in just a minute. Yes?
I mean, I, I think that it's important to make sure that everything makes sense financially. But I still think it's a good idea that we find out if we do have the option to use that money for the tank.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, I mean, that's kind of like the focus of the motion is supposed to be on.
Oh, thanks.
Yep, yeah. Don't argue that way. You should go ahead. All right. Jerry?
Yeah, just a couple items. First off, Southern Black Hills water, I think, is going out to forbid this for their new well and for the booster station. I think they went out for it already. They're gonna do it by the end of this week. So they're gonna have a bigger system there. The other thing I'd like to go back and address is that it's important to look at the whole picture. And that's why I'm so impressed with what Anthony is doing. He's looking at the whole picture, you know? If we get, if we fit just that 500,000, just now we get the WRT up, it's not, that's not gonna increase pressure. That's not gonna increase fire flow. That even increase, it'll increase volume of the loan and increase storage. So we gotta look at the whole thing. And right now, we do have that money that is, that is flexible. So we can do what we need to do with it. And then if we go back and look at the SRF loan, that's there. And if we look at it, when we got that loan, they did the calculations that, say if we would have taken that whole loan for 2.3 million or whatever it was. There is a calculation out there that would have said, and I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but how much, if you use it all, this would be how much it would be per month. So if we look at that number and then we come back and say, okay, maybe we're only gonna use 30% or 40%. And then we could say, it looks like it's gonna be 30 or 40% of what that initial number was.
Yes.
But I definitely agree with, with what Anthony's saying. We gotta, we gotta do the whole thing. Because otherwise, you know, by the time we go back, get loans, try to get grants. get loans, try to get grants again, uh, out into the future, uh, you know, hopefully nothing happens to our one well that we're giving water out of now. But if something works there, we're gonna be in trouble, so.
And so I'll just say, like, I have friends that are water treatment operators, good friends. And their day is go, go to work at six in the morning. First thing they do is make water, right? Put it up on the tower. And then after a couple hours, I mean, that's pretty much all they had to do that day, right? So it's, it's really, if they got a water main break, the first thing they say is, okay, what's the level on the tower, right? So like, it always goes back to the tower. They never think that the, the water treatment plant's gonna save the day. They're always saying, what do we got left in there? I had a situation where the water treatment plant, the SCADA, they took the SCADA down. The, the control system was getting replaced. And when they took the control system down, all the valves were siliconite valves. They're all automated valves. They couldn't open them manually. So they're sitting there without any way of getting water out of the water treatment plant to put into the tower. And they were debating at two in the morning, do we suck water out of the river to put into that tower? Luckily, they didn't have to do that, right? So it's always goes back to that as a, as a water systems operators. You know, what do I have in capacity? What do I have in reserve? What, that's what gives you time to make a repair, to, to do, to do things. You're kind of, you have a gun to your head when you, when you have limited water capacity. And then if we have one of the tanks that we gotta do a repair on, now we're down to 400,000. If, if it was the big tank, we'd be down to 130,000, so.
On that, we'll take the vote? Oh, go ahead.
But what, what's that paint lined with? Is that epoxy or fiberglass?
It's a, it's a, like a blider type liner, that corrugated one, yeah.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you'll have to tell me. It's like a razor, yeah. You got a question?
Sorry. Um, well, I guess two comments. Uh, if, if the new tank would still be useful even after well number two is back in use, I think it's a, a good idea if we're at risk of losing funds, grant funds, and we don't wanna do that. And we don't wanna be rushing decisions on what we're gonna do with number two and considering all the problems we have with it. I guess that's my input on that. And I do have a spreadsheet that I use this election, the past election, on what the water raise would increase by if we were using all loan, no grant, including the boring and comparing it to Southern Hills at that time.
Right.
And that, that's some information that I can share with you that they can look out of for me as well.
Yep.
I'll get, I'll get that to Terry.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay? Anything else, Anthony?
That was all I had.
That's it? I was planning. Very good. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Anthony one more time for the wonderful job he's doing for us. He's on the upper half of it. He knows, he knows which way we should go.
I'm just happy to have the opportunity, so, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Be safe out there. You have to go buy all that, don't you? Do you ride to Harley?
I, I don't have one.
Wait till you get all our work done before you start riding, just in case something-
Okay, that brings us to planning and zoning. Joe?
Um, I have permit 2024-26, which is a plat application for 850 Marie person 015391 for Jerry Stiles.
Jerry, do you want to explain to the citizens here what your-
There's a piece of property back there. It was seven point, what, 7.6 acres. We're splitting that in half. There'll be one side, it'll be four acres. The other side will be about 3.6 acres. There's actually, uh, what's in the plat here, and then there's actually a piece that's within the city limits. And it's a real small acreage amount. It's just 30 feet by 120 feet. That's actually in the city. Uh, we had the right of way from, when originally for the whole piece, the right of way came from the Crestons. And at that time, it was a private right of way. And if this here, we'll bring it to a public right of way. That way they can have two addresses there on that property. And the Negerbowers both signed off on that because the right of way is still owned by the Crestons and the Negerbowers. That land is owned by them. And now it becomes a private, it'll be a, become a public right of way. And all that does is just allow for two addresses coming off of that street.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, anybody?
Is that that property right next to Pulis' son?
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To?
To accept the-
Approved?
Yeah, to approve the application.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Well, my only concern is that, that, that road is so close to Pulis' son's yard. I, I could see maybe a conflict there. I, you know, I, I am, I went and looked down and I, I just thought, you know, it's pretty close to that house there. It couldn't have been moved a little further to the west?
West.
Yeah, west.
And so how much closer to, um, his yard is it than to anybody else's yard in the town of Hermosa? I mean, seriously, I, I just, I, I see, Jerry, I'll get to you.
That was just, you know, I just seen that and I thought, well, it could probably be moved a little bit to the left. There you go.
Go ahead, Jerry.
On that there, there's a 66-foot right of way there. We had our engineer was out there and looked at it. He said he had no issues with it. He passed that on to the planner who did the engineering, uh, on it. And I think you need to listen to what the engineer says. It's not an issue. Uh, it's a 66-foot wide away. The reason it can't go any further to the west is because there's that high-pressure fuel line, and you have to be 25 feet away from it. And as an example of, you asked a question, is that if you look in the alleys and stuff, alley roads are right next to the piece of people's property, right next to the yard. There's a piece of property that I own up here across from the school. There's a road right there. So this is not anything different than what's going on.
That was just my comment, you know, my observing.
And the 66-foot right of way is a great plenty. I mean, a lot, I think the roads in some of the subdivisions are 40-foot, aren't they? So 66-foot is a, better than the 40-foot, so.
And that gives enough room there, so the road is more to the east. But then the drainage that comes out of there, make sure that none of the flow or drainage gets over into Pulis' yard, that that's the drainage is on the other side, and it goes out to the street, and then it falls over down Marie Street.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? I will second that.
I'm sorry, I just haven't enough, um, involved in this.
Uh-huh.
So I just wanna be responsible on the, the most, and that's all.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't know enough about that. That's my-
Thank you. Okay, the motion's been carried, or first made and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's been signed off by an engineering firm, right? So I'm just wondering if anybody has any comments as to why we shouldn't approve this? I mean, Donna made a comment that she would prefer it to be one way or another, but does that preclude us from approving this, or should we kick it back?
No, I made a comment, you know, that was my comment.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, abstain.
You would like to abstain? It did pass? Three to one, Jerry?
Thank you.
Um, 2024-27 is pending until the next meeting.
Okay.
I have 2024-30 is a digging grading permit for, um, Southern Hills RV Park. Um, I do have a pre-inspection form on the back of there that Chuck went over and did look at that. So I don't know if Chuck has any comments. He's just gonna put down some gravel and dirt and make an approach. It's actually right across the road from where Jerry did gravel and an approach for the other property.
I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accepted digging and grading.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Excuse me, Shannon?
Oh, I was gonna second. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Motion's made and seconded. Do I have any questions, comments? Everybody's very quiet tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you. That brings us to-
Um, we have 2024-9, which is an informational permit from Chuck Ferguson that kind of got dropped off the agenda, and that would be my fault, but it's back on there now. Um, the temporary water line for those two lots down there. And he does, I did put everything in there. And then we also do have something from, um, DNR regarding that there's a letter. Chuck's moving forward with getting that all done and approved.
And so, so we just need to leave this pending and?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
That water line has been approved, uh, new six-inch by DNR last week. So that will go in as soon as I get time to put it in. And that will alleviate that situation that they will all be hooked up to the main line.
Okay. And so what kind of a timeframe are we looking at?
I'm hoping in the next couple weeks.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Dan, I see you had your hand up, and Jerry, I see yours too.
Um, on this situation of what we had, when the temporary water line was put in, it never was permitted. It was just put in. The only permit that was actually pulled for that particular project was the one where he was gonna come under Manning and come down with the temporary line and then changed and never brought any plans back in until after the line was in and hooked up and being used. And then the whole project of it being a subdivision and going the circumstances that it is, that it needed to be engineered. And prior to this all coming about, Mr. Ferguson was in the planning and zoning meetings expressing that he was getting everything put together to be approved by an engineer and then go to DNR, then revert back to us on as far as the sewer, the lift station, the water, and then show us the engineer plans. And to my knowledge, none of that has been followed, as well as what the subdivision ordinance is. And so I would ask the board that they not approve this and that he needs to follow the subdivision ordinance and bring in the engineer plans showing us the town, the drainage, the water, the sewer, um, and what's going to be done on these lots other than what has been done already, so that we actually have our ordinance followed instead of going against our ordinance.
All right, thank you, Dan. Jerry?
Yes, uh, when that comes down through there, you're still just gonna have one person fed off that, correct, Chuck?
No.
The way it's gonna be, you can feed all the lots in?
Yes.
Okay. And this letter, when I looked at it, it doesn't address the sewer, correct?
The sewer is under review. The engineer has looked at it and is in the process, uh, to be approved. The design was preliminarily approved. Um, there's still, uh, Anthony is working on the actual final approval of that legislation. At this point, it's serving one person, and it does not have to be designed for one person. Only when you hook more than one up to it, and that is what Anthony is in the middle of doing right now.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes, that's, that's correct. But then he will be bringing, and they'll get drawings and stuff like Dan was mentioning, so the drawings come in and so they can be looked at and reviewed, and then they'll have to go up to the state for review.
Yep.
Those drawings have been submitted to the state, and their biggest issue was they didn't have an example of it. They didn't necessarily accept it or reject it. There was a couple of red flags went up, and that's when Anthony got involved. And, uh, so whatever those, the guy that's involved in that was Neil, um, and he is not in that position anymore. He's moving up the ladder a little, and there's a new person in there, and Anthony has been a lucky one on the design.
Okay.
It's all in works. There, there were daily permits on every lot, uh, from the very start and whatever.
Okay.
So, like I mentioned before, it's meters on both ends, so it's not like anybody steaming in the water or anything of that nature. We all know, that knows anything about plumbing, that, uh, you can't have more than one going on a one-inch line. And that's why it was suggested that the temporary line, what is temporary, I don't know what that meant. Does that mean that three days, three months, three years, it's not defined very clearly? But the fact that it's meters on both ends, and I owned all of the property at the time that we did.
Okay. Joan?
Um, I, I just have to agree that you really need to review the subdivision ordinance. All of this should have come in together. It should have been sent to Anthony for a review, not piecemeal, one little thing at a time.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
And I guess that was, thank you for backing that up, Joan, but, so is this our new normal that we don't have to follow the subdivision ordinance? We can just put in our lift station, put in our sewer- We can just put in our lift station, put in our sewer, put in our temporary, even though you're our public works guy to help develop these ordinances, that we don't have to follow them? So if any other developers are coming in now, they can go ahead and just go ahead and start digging and putting their infrastructure in and set everything up and not bring in uh, application of P and Z, go through the process is what's supposed to be followed?
Yes, Dan, we understand.
It's just like abatement.
Jerry, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, that's, uh, I, again, it's very process oriented and Dan had mentioned the process, Joan had mentioned the process. And that it, before something can go to the state for something that's, because what it is, an extension of a sewer, water and sewer for the town. The town should have the opportunity to look at that and then, then it goes to the state. There's a process there that should be followed. And it looks like it's being circumvented.
Right.
And that's just my input.
And then, so as of this time, uh, we will just leave this pending? And because we, I mean, we'll wait for Anthony, we'll wait for the information. Uh, not for too long, but we can wait for it and bring it up at the, at the next or the following meeting. One more time, Dan.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, to me, to anybody else would have been fine. Penalties, stop work orders would have been put.
We, thank you, that's enough.
So, you know.
All right, so this is pending. And we'll move on to the claims. I'm sorry, Jill, you didn't have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
She's kind of like a puppet.
Yeah, that was funny. All right. So claims. Nothing has changed there?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Motion to approve? Pardon me, Shanna?
Jenny has the she-mos. She doesn't have her salon anymore.
I do.
I see a deposit refund here.
Yes.
She's, well, that's from her, she sold her mobile home.
Aye.
So that's.
She's actually moving in.
Yeah, she's living in the salon.
In the salon.
Oh.
She owned a mobile home and this is what the refund is on. Okay.
We can have residential and commercial now?
It, it, it was allowed, yes.
Per the ordinance.
Per the ordinance. Do I have a motion to accept the claims as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded it by Donna, thank you. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Law enforcement?
I have something to say about that.
All right, I'm willing to listen to you.
Okay. Well, I've been beating my head about this. Everybody says we should have a marshal, we should have a marshal, we should have a marshal. Well, we don't have money to have a marshal. Long and short of the story. Anyway, um, speeding down in Ferguson subdivision is horrible. And I would like the town to take in consideration that we put speed bump bumps down there. Chuck said there is some down at the building down there that we can use and I know there's been problems before, but I just, I just feel we need something. Cal's had him over on his street and the ones going down our street is the ones at the end of the street. I mean, yet last night we were sitting there and I said, what color was that car that just flew by? I mean, they just, they have no concept that it's a semi loose down there. They just think it's a highway. And, uh, another issue I have is I believe that we need to talk to DOT, whoever it is, and we need to stop that semi from coming in here loaded and tearing that highway up. People have asked, how come he gets to come in and tear that highway up? It's making a mess of the highway. There's a truck stop out there. If he's loaded, why can't he park out there? And every time he comes in when it's warm and it's hot and he's got a load, it tears it up just a little bit more. And you can drive by it, over it and there's grooves in the, in the road.
So first we'll deal with the, uh, speed bumps. Um, as I recall.
I know, we had some problems.
Yeah, we did. And part of it is the snow removal and part of it is the gunning it, the gunning it when they just get over the speed limit, really messed up the road right after the speed bump.
Well, Craig Nelson has them down in his, his park down there. Quite a few of them.
Yeah.
And, um, I just think it's worth a try. I mean, I, I, anybody else got any suggestions on what to do?
Right.
And Cal and I were talking, he says, as a board member, so we, can we, uh, write out tickets for speeding, a courtesy notice for speeding?
Well, as a citizen, you can, yeah.
And I, you know, I mean, if that's, you know, I haven't talked to the sheriff's department over there, but, uh, I don't know what, you know, Marty would, what he'd say, you know?
Well, first off, if, if it's in the city limits, Marty has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, right.
So, um, that's first and foremost. So Kent, I'll take your opinion on this.
With regard to speed bumps?
No, with the regard to tickets written by the town board or the citizens or?
Are we in legal right to, like, if we see where these people live, know where they are, can we go down there and talk and nap? Knack at their door?
No, don't do that, that's dangerous.
You don't have, you don't have authority to make arrests, issue citations in the name of jurisdiction.
A courtesy note.
I'm sorry?
A courtesy.
You know, as a good neighbor, that's, you know, in that scope, but, but you're, um, it's gonna be, uh, that, that's why we have people deputized, is to enforce.
Well, can we be deputized?
No, we all, if we were deputized, it would, we'd all have to go through the court and all that, so, you know, that, that's not gonna work.
So no, they don't have the authority to write citations.
Okay. Thank you. Cal, did you have something?
Um, I don't per se wanna just start handing out tickets to people, just so people are aware of that, but, I mean, in some egregious circumstances, could we go through the complaints in the office and get the complaint in front of the board? And then the board issue a fine for an egregious circumstance, you know, such as, you know, the street that Donna's talking about, I know for a fact there's a couple little kids that live on there and they're not real traffic aware.
Yeah, there's a number of reasons to be able to do that, reckless endangerment and they are violating, uh, the ordinance of speed in and of itself, so there is that. And there is such a thing, and it's real, it's called citizens arrest, but this is not really like that because at best you're probably writing the person's license plate number down and making, and making that follow-up. With that said, you can file that complaint and the city, uh, or law enforcement can, can follow through with that, so long as that person's willing to be an eyewitness with some level of substantiation that in fact he was speeding. That person's speeding, so. So there's that also.
Okay. Just a minute, um, how much is a, uh, I wonder how much one of those signs is, says your speed, the speed you're going? If we had one of those down there?
Electronic ones?
Electronic ones, yeah. Just a minute.
I have my hand up.
I, I, I kinda thought you did. Hang on just a minute, Shanna.
Okay.
Lana?
So after the rally, DOT would probably have a new one, because they have a plan here. So if they're not really using them, you know?
So who, who at the DOT office do I need to talk to?
Bruce?
Custer over there, the new, just call Connie at the Custer office and she'll put you in charge of whoever. Six seven three four nine four eight.
Four nine four eight? Six seven three?
And then after the rally, they may have one of them, you know, that says your speed is, speed limits.
Well, it's, you know, I, it's, it's terrible. I, you know, I mean, especially when they fly by and you can't even tell what color the car was. And, you know, maybe one of them would work.
Might help, might help. You know? Okay, Shanna?
Um, did we adopt the streets down there? We did, didn't we?
Yes.
I mean, we have speed limits down there, I mean, but they can't read. Or they don't think it applies.
They don't choose to. Dan?
I thought we came over.
We have.
Um, don't we have speed bump down at the tink, the, uh, the?
Yes, yeah, you missed that. Yes, we do. And we have talked about that. We're still kind of in that discussion of whether we should put them up or not. What damage?
I can't really hear what's going on. Is there any way to rebook a meeting on this?
Well, it only lets me go for an hour because we don't have a paid subscription.
You don't have what?
We don't, you have to pay to have it longer than an hour apparently.
Did you hear that?
No.
You have to pay to have it longer than an hour.
Oh.
So I can probably send another one.
I thought we were gonna make that available. We'll have to put that on the agenda, see what that is.
Yeah, okay.
Um, while I have your attention, can I kinda go through my list quick?
Your list of what?
Under law enforcement? Or come back to me when?
Yeah, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Kathy, I heard.
I was wondering, um, if they put up signs down there like slow children at play or something like that? I mean, you know, can they put up signs or get signs like that?
There is that too.
Oh, there is that down there?
Well, no, I'm saying there is that option also.
But they would have to buy them, so.
Well, they probably have to pay for anything.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we do own the, the speed bumps, but Kathy?
The other thing too, Fairgrounds Place is a bad place for people speeding to and there's kids down there too. If you could get some of those, uh, signs that says you're going this, I think that might be a good deterrent for people.
This is the, you know, and, and well, that brings up something with Fairgrounds Place too. Um, they block that gate off over there coming.
For the fairgrounds?
Yeah. And I think that has helped save our gravel on that road. Jackson, you know, he's just impressed, you know? But then all that things.
Good.
Save, you know?
Yep. Dan?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of free items, um, number one, everybody that listens to our meetings and hears, we have no money in our budget for law enforcement, we can't afford law enforcement. They take advantage of that. People do listen. And so that makes them even more inclined to let towns right over. So I think if we're a little more discreet about what we mention in our meetings that's broadcasted would help a little bit. The speed bumps on a block top surface are okay because you can go right up edge to edge where with what we had in the town, because I maintained them for them three years we had them, they just keep going wider. And then we put fence posts out into ditches and we tried to stop them from driving on lawns and then they just found out at fifty mile an hour, they could go over them and not even feel them, so then they got even worse. So the speed bumps weren't a good situation on that at all. And so I think the only solution we're gonna come with, your budget hearing's coming up, is put money in the budget for a cop. We need a law enforcement guy here. We all know we do. And there are circumstances where I feel, rather than spending money in some of these other projects, I would rather see this budget in law enforcement as a priority for our community. We've been really lucky up to this stage, but we're gonna get that element.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, uh, to go back, we've used, you guys used it in the past. I think what we, we could try to do is on the back of the water bills, just let the people know that there is speeding in that area. I mean, you could address it just to that area. Uh, just like you do when there's an overflow to the treatments or to the, the lift station. And then also on there, put down there, like Cal was talking about, is that these are the measures we're gonna take. We know that speeding is an issue down here, this is a measure we're gonna take. There will be, like, uh, Kent had said, you know, there's grievous circumstances in, in safety and, and that that you guys will be utilizing those capabilities. We just did it out there and letting them know.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Chuck, any comments on this?
No, they don't pay any attention to signs, so, you know, short of throwing spikes out there, they're not gonna slow down. Forward to them and they're, 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 they're there, so those people are very unaware. I mean, they go in and out there like night oak because, there's signs there, they just don't go there.
Well, I, I think, uh, what Cal suggested was probably the best that I can, that I've heard, the answer to that and that's, so, uh, basically complaint letters, you know? Following the ordinance where the health, welfare and safety. We're talking about children here that live in and play around the area and that being said, that, that takes the public to stand up and, and say so, you know? We have a complaint about if they, they know who the vehicle is, they know where the vehicle belongs, they know the like, they can get the license plate number and that complaint has to be formed up at the office. And then after it has been taken by the office staff, then it is anonymous to that point. Nobody else knows who made the complaint. So, um, I think that's our best, a warning on the back of the bills is a good one. That won't be too much longer, it'll be coming out. And maybe a courtesy letter to the whole development as to what, what is going to happen. That's my opinion.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Um, well, we, I don't, is it just a couple people that are, are the culprits of the speeding?
Oh, there's about four or five down there.
The whole place, I mean?
Four or five is what I'm hearing.
Okay. And as far as the semi, I mean, we already have that in the ordinance about, you know, where they can and can't park and temporary.
Well, it's the highway. I don't care where he parks, it's turning, they're not, the approach up there and I don't think that's even a legal approach because I think that's on Don or Tom Gable's land.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the highway here in a minute. Let's get one thing taken care of first.
I thought they were in the same, same subdivision?
No.
No.
My fault because I couldn't hear that. I thought they were both in.
Nope, that's all right, hon.
Subdivision.
Okay, Joan?
Um, number one, I think that putting up signs, both directions, children at play is an excellent idea. I don't care who you are, I think that slows you down. It's not like saying, go slow. It's children. And people pay attention to that. Secondly, I don't, I don't see what it would hurt to put up the speed bumps for two, three months. When it comes, take them out. That might be all it takes to get people used to slowing down.
I agree, well, you know, is trying.
Not that you can't still put it on the water bill, but I, I still think those are two very good suggestions.
There's a rusty sign that says children at play on the corner of Whitney, but there's no young children right there anymore. There's no young children right there anymore. You could probably borrow that one for a few years.
I think we can look at purchasing them. See how much they are. And I think it would be maybe a good thing if if we think that the, um.
I think it's a great idea.
Speed bumps are something we're gonna do. I think doing it all at the same time would be a good idea.
Slam them slowly.
Kinda like that, yeah.
Put up the signs and send out the letter and if we get enough complaints, put in the speed bump.
Yeah, okay.
The signs are a great idea.
Okay. Kathy.
These, uh, people that are speeding down there, can't they get their license plates number and everything and give it to the, and call the cops? And then I'm sure that they'd come in and do something about it, wouldn't they? I mean, we're not that bad.
No.
The cops wouldn't show up, will they?
That is a city ordinance, a city thing, and I'm not, they are not paid by the city to do that. They have the, um, obligation to do what is county, to enforce county laws and. But within the city limits, even when we were paying them, they didn't do very much for in-town ordinances. But thanks for asking. Everybody kinda needs to know that too. Kent, any words of wisdom? Just a minute, Chuck.
I almost can't resist.
Okay.
If you're gonna put up signs and say slow children at play, you should have one of those gifted children at play too.
Can't. Go ahead, Chuck.
Well, as Dan said, you know, you're kinda airing your laundry here on. On Facebook or whatever, who's gonna comment on the thing? And I know for a fact that taking their license plate and doing that, because it's been proven before. You have to know the name of the person that's operating that vehicle. I mean.
So a photo of the person?
Prove that and then you're gonna hold up at all.
That's true.
So you're just.
Thank you for bringing that out. I haven't.
And for the speed bumps, I mean, you got it, it's a snow, so.
Well, even if we took them up during, you know, when it got, we had winter time.
It can be taken up before the snowstorm and things like that.
I'll be with you in just a minute. Okay. All right, thank you, Chuck.
The ones that are over in Walnut Grove, uh, they're situated to the point where, and actually one part of them broke out. So they can swing out, you know, and but as like Dan said, you know. Those were in areas where, you know, they have the opportunity to swing out. Down there, they're, I mean, they're gonna be in the ditches that.
They go too far?
To try to avoid them and just being gonna happen.
Okay. Margie.
I would say, I would suggest using cameras, pictures worth a thousand.
To the public.
Well, I was speed trapped though, I mean, a radar, you can't move up faster than a long.
Right. Jerry.
Uh, a few years ago, I can maybe two years ago, there was grant money where we got the, up by the school and down there. Is that, is that an annual grant deal? Is that a program that was just a one-time deal? Is it something we can look into as far as a grant and see if we can get a couple more of those cameras down there? Because it, when that flashes, you know, you know what the speed limit is and it flashes above. I mean, most people are gonna say, oh, I gotta slow down.
Well, it's kinda like seeing an officer on the road. If you're speeding, you just automatically lift your foot off, you know.
So I don't know.
And even if you're not, some people do, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that was a one-time grant program.
We'll check into that, Jerry. Thank you. Cal. You've had enough?
No, I think it's been addressed by.
Everything.
Anybody, so.
One more time, Dan.
Thank you. Um, and just a matter on the speed bumps. If you're gonna do a few, you're gonna end up doing a whole town. Cause we've got them going down Second Street like crazy. They're going up Manning, they're going up Byless, they're going up Third. You're gonna have them everywhere. And just putting them down a few months and taking them back up, and they're done that too. It's not that easy. And you're gonna develop a full maintenance program because then spikes wanna work up. And about one time that somebody pops a tighter, then you've got that liability going on.
Okay.
It's the extra complaints, I'm just trying to say that we dealt with with people driving on their lawns, running everything up.
Yeah, I remember now. Okay, thank you. Well, we had a lot of comments and suggestions here and I think the first thing we need to do is, uh, call DOT. See if we can get some, some flashing speed signs and check to see how much it would cost to have, um, children at play signs. And, um, we'll get that information as soon as possible and come back to the board with it at the next meeting. Shannon, did you have more on in law enforcement?
Yes. Um. I don't know if anyone else has had any issues, but I had someone try to break into my car and crack the passenger side window. Uh, front window and key the crap out of it between the two of them. Um, and also siphoned my gas tank empty. And I know there's a few other people that have had their gas siphoned. And I'm just wondering if we can request the county to do their drive-throughs at alternate times in the evening, maybe in the middle of the night. As well as, you know, I know they're doing mornings for the school. School donor or whatnot, um. But people know that we don't have policing going on around here and my car hasn't moved in months and that's probably why they targeted it.
And when did this happen?
Well, I don't know because I haven't driven it, but within the last month.
All right.
Um. In the process, you know, I, as far as reporting it, if I call the county and report it, how does that get back to the town? And then I guess, you know, we want to be aware of it so we know what's going on, but then like Dan said, we don't wanna advertise it. That we have no law enforcement and stuff getting broken into.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So.
Okay. Kent?
I remember talking about this a long time ago, I think it was, I think it was here, and that was, um.
What's that?
Uh, I remember some time ago, like years and years ago, there were, uh, I think we discussed it here regarding, I brought up neighborhood watch groups.
Yeah.
And having community, uh, you know. Uh, clumps of neighbors, uh, area, certain neighborhoods that are obviously defined by geographics and so forth, getting together and. And there are, there are grants that you can get through those as well. And part of one idea is, and I just thought about it the other day, cause like my son installed, uh, ring doorbells with their hot, the resilience on it was amazing. And they have panoramic ones that catch a lot. And they light up, I mean, like a hundred and fifty bucks. And they could, and that's, and then for a hundred bucks a year, they record for, in hold of six months. And you could set up certain things, I imagine, it's not rocket surgery, to have a post here and a post here and be able to gauge that's minimal, minimal forensic observation. How long it took a vehicle to go from that post to that post. Eh, then you've got your deal and luckily, hopefully, a, uh, picture of the driver too that fits that description. That would be one makeshift way, just thinking, um, that, and then you could, you could position those where maybe a grant or whomever. You get, uh, those cameras or ring doorbells on every other house enough to get that panorama that would cover. Uh, and stop things like, uh, the siphoning and vandalism. Those are the little SOBs that need to get mailed.
Okay. Good idea also. Did you hear that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is also things we can check into, the grants and and those things. And here again, it solves nothing right now. We'll get back to it at the next meeting. Okay? Anything else on law enforcement?
So I have one question.
Okay, hang on, go ahead.
Are we going to put something on the water bill so they're going out right this month?
I think that's a fine idea. I think that, uh, maybe even a, a, a nice courtesy letter.
Well, I'd say have said that if they typed one up, I would hand deliver them to the residents down there.
Okay. Are we in agreement to have a courtesy letter hand delivered to everyone in Ferguson Development? Okay, good. Kathy.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but tonight I was mowing, that's why I'm over here dirty. But I killed a snake in my, while I was mowing. I was chasing it and then I chopped it up with my mower. But I was wondering about that field that's north of us, when is it gonna get hay? Or who's gonna hay it? That's your field, isn't it? That's your property? When is it gonna get hay? It's, the grass is this tall.
Yeah, really.
No, they won't get. All of that hay back there, all of that field, it didn't get mowed. I saw it tonight, I mowed and it's tall. And I know that's where that snake came from and I, I chased that sucker down and mowed it up because I don't know if it was a rattler or if it was a bull snake, but.
It was.
You know, I don't want snakes coming in my yard.
Okay, uh, so.
Coming from the field.
Well, that being said, I've heard of other snakes in the area that are not coming from that field. It is, it is a problem this year everywhere. It's even on the Facebook pages for the bikers are complaining about the snakes in the hills area. And it's because of the dry weather and they're trying to go somewhere that has the moisture. So if your gardens or grass or if you're watering a little bit, they, they can smell that or sense that or whatever their thing is for miles and miles and miles.
Usually that field is mowed before now. I mean, some guy goes and mows it down because, because, and hays it.
Hays it, yes.
You know, and he bails it, you know? But I was just wondering, he's got the equipment down there, but I was just kinda wondering if you know when he's gonna be mowing it because, you know, he's had it down there for three weeks.
Okay, well.
And I just.
Hopefully that'll be soon.
Property and I just was kinda wondering, cause it's, and I just, you know.
Yep.
I mean, God.
You didn't pick the snake up after you chopped it all up to see what it was? You didn't rake it up or anything?
Why chop that baby up?
Okay. Darn, darn. I I have, I had garter snakes in my yard and I, and I love it, but yeah.
This was a long.
Yeah, no, I don't, I wouldn't want one of them either. Jerry, go ahead.
Uh, is this where, are we gonna have specific abatement discussion under law enforcement or is that just a segue into abatements here? I have a comment on abatements.
We'll get to that. Thank you. All right, uh, anybody else?
I worked up there with Lisa Luck. We had, um, a couple of snakes right there on the porch of the office. One more name.
Here?
No timer out here.
Here? Shannon.
I'm getting a heart attack.
Here at the office?
Yeah, when we walked out the door to have a break, have a coffee break outside and water the flowers.
Eek, what kind were they?
They were just little baby gardeners, I think, but I made her get a shovel and get rid of them.
Oh, okay, good.
She was hooked up with me because they were good for the environment, not bad.
Yeah, well, they kind of are, yeah. All right, thanks, Shannon. Um. So we will go into, um. The Custer County log, we did get one this month for.
July.
For July, yes.
Is that in our packet?
No, it just came today.
Okay.
So it was sitting, you've got a copy of it on your desk here. Lot of paper service in this particular month. Abandon vehicles. So that is, let's see, two, four, six, seven, ten.
It's not a rookie's name behind it, the ninety-two point two feet.
Forty-two of them on the month of July, um. Some of those, that includes the ambulance calls, um, the paper services. Missed dials. So with the missed dials and the paper services, you can take off at least ten just at a quick glance. And an out of county, yep, yep. Welfare check. Okay. I think it's interesting to get these. I, I do appreciate that. That brings us to, okay, Chuck.
Well, one of the things that goes on at the law enforcement thing is, you know, they always wind up this part of the county and all those. We have no agreement of any kind with the county.
No.
For them to work for the county. So consequently, I see them pulling a lot through our subdivision. Sunday afternoon, whatever, but I don't know if they're going to work or what they're doing, but their presence is about. And I do see them. And I think probably they've been obstructed, you know, on their way to work, make a swing through this area or that area. Didn't let the public know that we are around, you know, but we have no agreement.
No.
The county at all for any protection, other than the fact that the taxpayers pay so much on this side of the county. So, uh, as far as law enforcement goes, it ain't gonna happen.
Okay, Cal.
What, in that case, then what exactly are we paying Custer County share for?
Nine one one.
That's a lot.
It's nine one one.
The dispatch.
That's only nine one one service here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have seen them though more. You know, and like when we did have the contract with them, I think we're getting more out of them now than we think when we had the contract with them. You know? We see them more. And I, after I told them, I said, you know, we are part of the county.
Yep. Thank you. Abatements. I, I don't see. There's just a few that were, uh, either called or a letter sent to, one, two, three, four, five, six. That were bad and that is one of those, here again, we're, um, with the weeds and the, the grass. The shorter your grass is, the better. You know, and same with any weeds about, so. Did you have something, Jerry?
Yes, uh, if I go back and look at the last, uh, board meeting and, uh, abatement list that was there. It's been considerably, uh.
Narrowed.
Brought down, okay? Some of these were done. There's one of them that was on there last time that is gone now. I brought this to Cal's attention and it has not been abated. But you, you guys as a board sat there and said that you're not gonna worry about lilacs, you're not gonna worry about ten-foot fences, you're not gonna worry about this. But what you're gonna ensure is that the grass stuff gets taken care of. One of those places is the place that Kathy was talking about. There's twenty-five foot or twenty foot inside on the property boundary that needs to be mowed. And they, they mowed the ditch, but twenty feet in, that's what the ordinance says. The comment that was in it before, and their comment was, it's, I've never done it. Well. Well, I wish Kathy was still here. I have six sig- six signatures from people who live in that area that says, up until last year, when I became board president, those, that was mowed twenty feet in, even some of the whole lots were mowed. And just because someone says, I've never done it, that's not a reason to take it off. I mean, you know, I was driving to town the other day and got caught by a speed, you know, for, got picked up for speeding. This is just an analogy. And, and the cop says, you know, what are you doing? You're speeding. I says, well, I never drive a speed limit. That didn't get me off. It's still an ordinance, and so I wanna know why was that removed?
I don't know, but I will check into it, thank you. Okay? Uh, as you can see, like Jerry said, the, the list has gone down a lot. Go ahead, Chuck.
Well, it brings up the awareness of mowing. Uh, there was a rather large rattlesnake killed in Rupp Trailer Park. And, um, we got the complaint and the Lord took care of it.
Thank you.
But there was kids running around, and I, it's just an absolute miracle that nobody got that. Now, this guy's packing thirteen rattles, and if there's anything to one button every year, he's been lurking around here for thirteen years. Unless he came in. Now, the grass east of us was mowed, the hay was done. Can't believe, let come out of that grass, so it's so important to have the grass mowed for the visibility, because if you can't see them, and like me, you can't see them and you can't hear them, I'll get bit thirty-three times, but it's, it's, it encourages the fact that the grass needs to be cut. So we have the visibility. And, you know, then there's some lady whining that, you know, you don't have to kill them, you know, kinda like Castor and the coyotes, you know, but anyway, Ruppso Gardens doesn't take snakes. They haven't done it for several years, taken them over there, so I will make it a point that when we find another one, we'll turn to losing her yard.
Excuse me?
You know, people do not understand or have ever seen animals that have been bit by rattlesnakes. Especially, you know, they're curious and they got their nose down there. If, if they bite them and kill them, they suffocate, because their noses swell up so bad that they can't breathe and, you know, if you've done too bad soon enough, but that doesn't work out very good for horses and cows and things like that. Uh, it, the awareness that they're here, this time of the year, you know, they're running in pairs. Cause they are, it's a breeding season, and when they go into hibernation, it's another whole other deal.
Yep.
Poisonous snakes have little ones, and non-poisonous lay eggs. So rattlesnakes have, they're little rattlesnakes.
Yeah, they are. Trust me, I know.
They're just as potent as, as large as. I've seen people that caught them and thought they were night crawlers, and that's none, you know?
Yeah, it's bad.
Yep.
I, I know I, I had that experience myself.
Nothing other than visible, be able to see.
Yep, thank you. It, it, I'm gonna add another negative thing to this story, just because, um, so if you didn't know this, rattlesnakes are evolving and they're being born and no longer, some of them no longer growing their rattles. So, um, it just does mean you just need to be even more careful. And so the grass.
We killed two last year that had no rattles.
You had killed two? Okay, that I didn't know. But, and I did see the snake that Chuck was talking about, and it was big and the buttons were about that long, and it was big around, and, uh, so I, I just encourage everybody to mow, weed eat. Um, it, I, I would have to kill it myself if I, if I found it. I, I.
There's nothing better than this.
Transporting it to somewhere, yeah, okay. Not me. So, just letting y'all know that. Um, and, and I'm, I am a, I, you know, I like snakes that don't bite and don't have poison, but.
Remember, how do you know which ones those are?
Well, I know striped ones don't. I've had a lot of dealings with those, so. Dan, did you?
No.
Have your hand up? Oh, okay. Um, let's move forward here, um. That brings us to legal. Oh, thank you. This is the proposal from, uh, Hague and Hague, Attorneys at Law. Have we had any calls? No? No calls? Um, I don't know that, uh, most of you were maybe here at the meeting, the last meeting, when we were discussing this, and Mrs. Pillen said that she knew a lot of lawyers and would get the word out, and we talked to her on Thursday or Friday, and, uh, she had no information. Um, Vicki was also checking into that, and she had no information. At this point in time, we've had nobody interested. The posting's been there for a long time. Uh, and I will, uh, guess Connie, you had?
I'm just wondering where the, the town board, where did you guys post it at, that we needed an attorney?
On the website?
On the website.
That's it?
That's it.
Yep. Go ahead, Jerry.
I think it's very important that when we go out and try to find another lawyer, that we do it in the same manner when we went out and found our new engineer. You know how satisfied you are with that engineer? And what we did on that there, we went on a performance-based announcement. It wasn't based upon whether you knew somebody or not. You know, I kinda had that up as the president at the time. I worked with every engineering firm in town, but I didn't go and talk to anyone and ask them to come down, because I had a certain criteria that we wanted to have met. And to make sure that we got the best person for the job. And we cannot rely upon, uh, someone saying, well, he's a friend of somebody. We knew what happened on the last engineer. But what my thing is, is we need to go out, like with Connie bringing up, we need to go out and advertise and say the town is looking. You know, I provided, I don't know how many names to Cal. I don't know if Cal called any of them?
Not yet, no.
I provided at least seven or seven names to him. And has he called? Uh, not yet, but what we need to do.
But Vicki did.
I don't know, she tried to call a couple, two people, and that was different than this. But what we need to do, and Cal's kinda, or the engineer kinda mentioned it today, we're getting on really good rapport with the state again. That's because we got a good engineer. Part of the reasons we're on such bad rapport, because decisions were made wrong in the past.
That's enough, Jerry, thank you.
We need to get.
Jerry, that's enough, thank you.
I think the big thing you need to realize is that we did check with a lot of attorneys, and many of them have conflicts of interest because of boards they're on, involvements they've had with other committees and stuff that we've dealt with. And they've seen the drama and soap opera that have been involved down here the last forty years, and want nothing to do with it.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
I'm very happy that we have an attorney that's willing to accept us.
Thank you.
And one that's willing to take the position on.
Thank you.
I believe at this time, I, Kent has too many, too much, uh, personal conflict. And I, I, at this time, I don't feel that Kent is our, our attorney. I think we still need to do a little more digging and a little more research and a little more advertising, because he has too many, uh, it's, it's not a good thing, and that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. All right, on this, we are acting on it tonight, and, uh, um, we can keep this on the agenda if you wanna make those phone calls, and we can discuss, um, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask, uh, Mr. Hague, did you, were you able to post the posting on the SD Bar website? I believe we talked about that at the last meeting and the meeting prior.
Uh, the, the next, uh, circulation, when it comes around, uh, then you, I will have it entered on it.
Okay.
Requested.
Do you know about when that'll be?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I did check, or I have my secretary check on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure when that has to go on.
Is it approximately quarterly or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Cause we always have quite a bit of a lead time for it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, when I make the calls, I can direct them to go see the posting, but then I just remembered she said we put it on the website too, so I direct them there as well. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so we will keep this, we'll discuss it again at the next meeting. Okay, all right. Public works. No?
No.
Everything's fine?
Uh, a couple things that, uh, come into play, and we've already discussed this, I would like to bring it up. Front of the lift station that goes over on, that is serving one individual, and you do not have to have an engineer to do an individual lift station, so when the time comes to hook someone else up, then that has to be designed, and that's what, uh, the engineer is doing at this time.
Okay, thank you, move on, please.
So that's, that's enough.
Yep, thank you.
The other thing in the streets, we've talked about that, that gravel is supposed to be arriving. Uh, like I said before, disappointed in that that came out of the streeter pit. So I think it's gonna have to come out of the wing to get the quality of gravel that we need. That is my negotiation against them.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Chuck at all.
Go down and take care of that.
Yeah.
About the gravel that's supposed to be coming?
Going to the yard.
Yeah. No, they haven't been ordered yet. Go ahead. Chuck?
I'm gonna hear her.
I'm talking to you.
Okay. Shannon and I are going to drive around, look at the streets as soon as possible.
Okay.
Go over there.
Thank you.
Take care of the streets. We have drove around, looked at the streetlights, and, uh, we have two that were, uh, and I have not fixed that they cut the cables going to them. I'm doing what RAA with those.
Okay.
Several issues here lately that kinda disrupted the work that is in progress. Uh, there's been, uh, a work order being worked on. We've looked at several meter situations. We had a leak in the meter pit on Luck Street, um, that we repaired this morning. And, uh, it was a bad valve. We found that, um, the three-quarter ball valves that we've been purchasing, they just don't hold up. Uh, they're brass, and I don't know what's wrong there, but they do not stand up. So we can get stainless steel, and the only place I've been able to buy them of all places is Menards. The wholesale companies don't carry them. So we're probably gonna pick up a half dozen or so of them. One of those here on Fresh Out, I had to put it in the glass.
Nobody's saying anything except for Chuck.
Uh, because I didn't have another stainless steel one. I don't think there was a tremendous amount of water loss. If you look at the water loss statements, they're way down again. That thing does this. Five percent and two percent and twenty-nine percent, and nothing really, I feel it's in the, in the numbers. Because the leaks are not fixing themselves, so how can it go up and down that much?
Well, that will be, um, easier to determine when we have the automatic meter readings, when everything comes in. And then if we still have them, then there'll be other questions, so. Yep. Okay, sewer?
Anthony kinda touched a little on the sewer. We're going to, he's got the preliminary drawings of where the treatment plant goes. So we will probably be making the necessary provisions for those. And we're gonna probably pour some pads for the buildings to set on.
Okay.
He's got it all pretty well worked out in the plan.
Yep, good. And how, I presume that with the heat and the wind, that we're having no problems as far as capacity?
And it's whole nuthin'.
Whole nuthin', okay.
So I would make the statement, and like it or not, that I, I believe that eighty to ninety percent of the people that live in this town have no idea where the water comes from or how it gets to their houses, let alone the sewer system, the complexity of that, and the hammering and getting and how that wastewater gets to their homes.
Yeah.
They don't have a clue.
Right.
I believe that some of the statements that were made tonight are a personal vendetta, and I'm not going any further with that.
Thank you. Connie?
Um, I obviously was not gonna make it to the meeting, but I'm not remembering what day I called Chuck about the guy offers a little sewer smell in my area. Tonight is ungodly. Like, I can't even sleep in my bedroom tonight, but I've been under my trailer and it is not coming from my house. So I know for a fact two people in my neighborhood have a massive sewer problem, and the lot next to me, every time it's cambered, there's a huge blockage in there. The last time it came up in my house, I had company, and I had to pay for a snake. And I took that a hundred and fifty foot and chewed through more freaking roots to clear the line. That is not gonna happen to me again. So I don't know whose problems what, but somebody needs to address it before it comes into my house. It's horrible tonight.
So the smell is inside your home, not outside?
I can smell it outside too, but it's come, my, the sewer comes in on the end of my, the north end of my house.
Okay.
So it's just the fumes in the line probably, but there's nothing under there. I crawled under there. Cheryl just went there and crawled under there. She said it is horrible outside, but it's not coming from my house.
Okay, Shanna just said her house is, she, she has it too.
Well, that whole line needs fixed. I'm here to tell you, two people, we know who the two people are that need to fix their stuff. And that blockage in the lot next to me has got to be dug up and fixed. We keep adding people on that line, and it's gonna be more stuff coming down the line and nowhere for it to go but in my house and back up in my shower. I'm not paying for it again.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Chuck, we need to discuss this?
Well, we looked in the mains this morning, yesterday and this morning, they're flowing clearly. I don't know if it's a vent problem or what goes on, but I do know for a fact that older mobile homes, the stacks are not high enough on the vents. They just stick through the roof about a foot, and that is not enough. And lots of times that, uh, bathrooms that don't get used for a period of time, lots of times traps get dropped. bathrooms that don't get used for a period of time, lots of times traps get dry. And it'd be who's you to run a little water in there, we experienced that in our own house. That if the bathtub in the spare bathroom hasn't been used for a month or two or whatever, that P trap goes dry and different people walk in the house and say, "It smells in here," I don't say like what?
It smells shit.
One way, one way to run water in that trap, you know, and it can be a washing machine, traffic and maybe lots of things. That's the idea of the P traps is to stop the odor.
It's not a dry trap in my house, I can guarantee you that. And you know how many problems are right there on that street within 100 foot? Something's done.
When they tested it just last time, they didn't see anything there. Let's tell you. I can come down personally, walk around and see if we can come up with something.
That'd be wonderful, we can figure out where it's coming from.
Might be able to, I don't know. My shop's right across the street, I haven't smelled it, but.
Well, come down after the meeting, cause right now it's god awful horrible. And if Shannon can smell it at the other end of the block, there's a problem, it's not just me complaining about it, I wasn't even gonna come to the meeting, but it's, I can't sleep in my own room tonight. How bad it is.
Shannon, you had something?
Yeah, it's not just smelling it at the other end of the block, it knocks you out and my mom could smell it worse in the house than out of the house, but I've never had this problem before until then. And I actually had Chuck number two open up the vent out in the alley and both times and it helped the problem. So he was saying it was my vent plugged somewhere, so it's nice to hear someone else is having the same issue and the same remedy seems to work. And now of course the cop might be trapped because of it, but I've been running water and filling up the sinks and pulling the drain quick, trying to flush it out, it's never-ending, but it's stinking, I completely understand where something's coming from.
Okay, thank you. Chuck, do you put that on your immediate list, please? Chuck into that a little further if you need.
Yeah.
Gal, do you have time maybe to go with him? If you, if you have, would you please, let me rephrase that?
Just depends on what time he goes.
Okay.
You know, I mean, obviously it's pressing, but I, my schedule is more clear after about three to four after then, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chuck was in the manhole, so I mean, he did show up and, and checked in there, but and then it kind of went, but the breeze was out of the north, northeast, then it switched to the northwest. That's when I could smell it, any other day I can't smell it, but tonight it's, it's bad.
Alright, Chuck into that, please.
I can do that.
Thank you, Dan, you have something?
Yeah, I just, I guess I was wondering on the gravel, you said you're gonna wait on the gravel and that oil to pick it up until you drive by with Shannon?
I did not say that, Dan.
Because to me, I'd like to see the board get an itemized list on what streets are gonna be applied and done and fixed and then there are alternatives to that oil that are better alternatives and better used than what that system is, because we looked into that before.
Okay.
And a lot of areas that millings can be used instead of gravel, that'll actually be more effective.
Would you like to put it in a proposal, Dan?
I feel that it would be good that Mr. Ferguson write up a proposal of what he is going to fix and repair on what streets in the detail and then that is due to all for a proposal for bids.
I would like to remind the board that Dan is no longer on the board or on any of the deals, so this is a personal opinion.
Correct. Jerry?
Yes, and another thing within Chuck's contract, there's a deal in there that he has the right for first refusal. So before something can go out for bid, Chuck has to, Chuck has to say, "I don't want to do it." As long as Chuck is saying, "I want to do it," there's no option to go out on bid, that's the way the contract is written.
Thank you.
Is there a dollar amount on that?
Three thousand? What is the dollar amount on that?
It isn't dollars.
Open book, huh?
Well, there's, there's a dollar amount in the contract that talks about, I think it's up to about $3,000 where something needs to be fixed right away. You don't have to wait until the board comes around the next time to do it, that it's there. But no, I think he has the right for first refusal in the contract, so.
I only ask because there is, at a certain limit, you do have to put it up for bids regardless.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that was just changed in two congresses to go up at the state, it went from 25,000 to 50,000.
Up to 50?
Up to 50, yes Shannon.
Thank you.
Streets?
Either way, I think I would have to agree, we should probably drive around and at least get a plan of what we actually need, so we don't have stockpiles that turn hard and overspend, it sounds like we're gonna need money for a lot of other things this next year. I mean, to make sure that 60 is enough or not enough or way too much.
Okay, so Shannon, being on the street department, will be going around with Chuck and getting a list of things that need to be done and try to work up some, some dollar amounts on those things to let us know and am I blind?
I can't see either.
There must be a separate contract. And I'll have you look, find, look on that.
Let Chuck know I'm, should be available the rest of the week.
The rest of the week Shannon will be available. He acknowledged that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, check into that. Alright. Um, keep looking at that agenda, sort of the other one here. That's it you have for open work orders? I did notice that we had, be right with you Joan, that we had gotten a new box of meters in and so you have things to work with there, that's good. Joan?
On open work orders, I would just like to note that the date on 280 matting says February 2023. It was actually May 9th of 2022.
Okay. Let me get that go. 11 C. I realized those. Say the date again, please.
You have a date?
The, yeah.
May 9th, 2022.
Thank you. Okay.
And you should have emails logged up.
Okay.
Well, it would have been in Gail's email, I suppose.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that brings us to finance officer.
So you have the bank statement, the reconciliation there? Any other questions?
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
Go for it.
Do I see that? When, when or who or how was it decided that these are the reports to add to the packet? And I only say that because personally, I don't know if this reconciliation really, I don't need to look it over to make sure things are correctly, you know? But I would like that report when the finances do get put in the packet, that show us where we're at in our budget.
That was, that was before Terry's time. Um. Wait. Does anybody give a? Jerry?
I think some of the formats, I think Dan could refresh my memory on that, but I think Dan had a specific way he liked to see them.
Yeah.
And then that's kind of the way it was, cause it did give the whole big picture.
Right.
You could just look at it and see what was going on. So it's, it's been going on for a long time. It does give the big picture, so.
And the recitation pretty much matches the claim. She's showing you where she coded the claims to. And I gotta trust you know her to claim them, you know? I just think that, for me, it's a wasted report, I'd like to see the, the year-to-date budget to see how much we've spent and what we have left and where the funds are sitting at.
We, we've been getting that, well, we use about quarterly, I think. So maybe, but we're right up to budgets now, so.
I mean, I can certainly include that next month.
I have a question, there's one thing that's on there.
Okay.
Did you have warm coffee?
Hang on a minute Shannon.
What's that?
That Maya's Thai coffee for $25, was that one of the?
That was the, that was the guy that came, the vendor that came?
Oh.
For the, her most, for the.
We approved the.
That, and I just, and we approved, and I just got the check written, so that's what that was for. No, we didn't have coffee. I don't even drink coffee, so.
So let's discuss that at the budget meetings. Alright. Okay. Next?
As far as updates, just, we did get that CD from, actually the money we got from the county, we did move that to Bank West, so we're earning just over 5% on that. And we put it in actually two CDs, they had a special, an eight, eight-month CD for the 5.05%. And so we moved 300,000 to an eight-month and then they let us put the remainder, which was 210,72559 into a six-month. Just cause we didn't want to tie up all that money in case we needed to spend it with our time, with our project, so. So, I mean, in Bank West.
Was there a penalty for withdrawing?
There was.
There was, but the increase that we're getting at the new bank was well above that.
Yeah, okay, I was just making, that's what we thought, I was just out.
Yep, yep.
Absolutely.
Played out, so, that's great.
Yeah, it is great. Yep. Yep, and that was the decision to split it up so that the other one pays, the eight-month one pays a little more and, and we won't need that money, you know? Maybe not even that long, or maybe even longer than that, so, yeah, that was a good deal. Okay, next?
And then the other update I just found is, so we did get the dumpster sign updated. Jill and I put this on, so now it says all yard waste must come from within town, minutes for limits. And that's on both sides of the board, so whether that people read that, I don't know.
Right.
Well, my grandson did today.
Good. You read it, huh?
He said, "I can't put this, those garbage, those bags in there, right?" And I said, "No, you cannot, no kind of bag."
Very good. Okay.
And then I guess the next thing would be the, to want to switch those budget dates?
Yeah, the budget meetings that we set last week, I, I, I can't do, so I'm hoping this will work for everybody. Um.
What were they, the 14th and 15th?
13th, 15th and 20th before.
Yeah, but we have a board meeting.
Yeah, I know. And so now the 22nd, 27th and 29th.
22nd, 27th and 29th?
Right, that is, 22nd is a Thursday, 27th is a Tuesday and 29th, if we need it, is a Thursday also. Do you know of any issues for that?
Not at this time. Baseball, baseball's over for a little bit, only one championship.
Ooh, okay. Gal, still looking?
Um, I'll just have to take those days off so I can be 100% focused on the budget. I'm, no, I'm not gonna do that. I can come in the evening though.
Yeah, the budget meetings are in, at the normal time of 6 o'clock.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Does that give Terry enough time to put the resolution for ordinance, budget ordinance together for its first reading?
Yes.
To be done, I think basically by the first meeting and December.
I basically got the budget pretty much done, there'd just be any changes that you guys will make. Just getting that revenues and the expenses worked out.
We have that for first reading.
Yeah, and then I, yeah.
That Tuesday.
Yep.
No, the first reading wouldn't be until
The meeting, the meeting in September.
Yeah, so the first reading would be, yeah. So, yeah, I'll have plenty of.
Yeah, it is just a few days, yep.
Yep, that's fine, and we talked about that, but I think we can make it work, so, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so anything else on your finance?
Um, the only other thing is.
Oh, that initiated measure.
So Satcom Minnesota League, and I just got this, so there's an initiated, initiated measure that's gonna be on the ballot in November that has to do with repealing the grocery, or the food tax. And how it's gonna impact the town, because we do get sales tax. They are, based on what they looked at, what we've been collecting, it could be a loss of $52,000 for the town per year.
It is.
A loss?
Yes.
We wouldn't, cause.
It is a great thing that, that citizens all over the state, all over the United States think is a great thing. But they don't take into consideration that the taxes will have to be made up somewhere else. The money has to be made up. $50,000 will come out of our budget if that law goes into effect. And, and I know, I know we all think, yay, we shouldn't pay taxes on groceries, but it is a totally fair tax. You know, it's the same tax for you as for me if I buy a steak or we buy a jar of applesauce. It's, it is a fair, fair tax. And small communities all over the state, and considering that our state is mostly small communities, it, it's just gonna, it's gonna be a severe hardship in this state if this law passed. So we are asking as, as a town, as your town, to please vote no on, on initiated measure 28, please. Because without that $50,000, I mean, we have a hard time paying our bills as it is, you know, we already don't get to have, we don't have a park, we don't have, you know, we don't have paved roads. We don't have things that we want in our community. And, and if this goes through, the water bills are just gonna have to go up. That's, that's the only, only way that we have of making money to, to pay our bills with. So please, I, I know how you all feel, I know everybody, when they say, "Oh, we're, you know, state's gonna take away a tax." Everybody's like, "Yeah, finally," you know, "Finally, we're gonna get rid of a tax." But it, it will harm us in a very large way. So please. Dan?
I think you're exactly right, and the other bad part is that it doesn't, doesn't affect food items, you're also talking the soda and tobacco products. These are many, you know, everything of that nature also that's luxury that's affected. So I would recommend, you know, maybe an ad in the newsletter, an ad in Facebook, cyber, any social media that a person can propose out there to get it out to people that if it was wrote properly for grocery purposes only, I think it might be a little bit of circumstance, but it's too vague.
Well, it'd be less money anyway. Well, it'd be less money anyway. Thank you, that's a good idea to put it in the newsletter and put it on the town page and all that.
Where's Municipal League come in on this?
Municipal League also has said no.
They're the ones.
Yeah, uh, yeah, they're fighting against it. However, that, you know, the normal public does not see what the Municipal League does. So as board members, we know what they are doing for us, but the actual citizens don't generally know that, so. Shannon?
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe not on the back of this water bill, but the next one, if you already have it up on the website, the information about this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the back of the water bill, mention something about the information, you know.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Something about a lost tax here needs to be made up here for more information, and put a QR code, you can create your own on.
Yep.
And, well, really, put a QR code so that they can get to the webpage and read.
Very good, thank you. Did you have something? Dan, you had something else?
It might be great to share this letter from the Municipal League and put it in our display out here too, and on boards and post office. That they know it comes from the Municipal League and it's not just personal opinion.
Yep, good idea, thank you. All right, um, that brings us to old business. The update on the gravel on Tower Road, do we?
I'd have, uh, discussion with, uh, Charbonne, that's, you know, he said, putting gravel on there isn't gonna cut it. And we need to cut it down, put some large rock in.
Mm-hmm.
And then gravel over the top.
Yep.
I was at the streeter pit and looked at some of their larger rock.
Dan?
To be able to put down first, I mean, it's gonna have to be perfectly dug out and the dirt disposed of and some heavy rock put in. And then some little base over the top. However, if a booster line is going to be installed there, it has to go right through that area to disconnect existing ones. So, kind of redundant to do all that in here about to fix pressure problem. We'll discuss that a little with Shannon and Melina.
Okay.
Before that's coming together out there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Cal?
I just wanted to ask the clarification questions, so are you planning on addressing this in the future? If and when we do need to add things to the area, then we can take care of everything at once, right?
Well, that's an issue that I'm working on with the engineer. Now, we're gonna be able to get some pressurized water to the ones that are on the west side. They're not gonna take care of the ones that are on the east. We're trying to figure that out, I don't know if we can, I mean, if it's booster, that's one thing, but you're not gonna get them all.
Okay, we will keep looking into this. Thank you. Dan?
If you go to do that Tower Road deal, then that will be something that'll be put out for bid then, or just gonna be done?
We'll have to see what it comes out as here. We can do a little more research and we'll let you know at the next meeting.
Yep, because we did use just the bigger inch and a half and two-inch base course.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of the big rock, and it floated in nicer in that first approach, and just went to a heavier depth. So it saved a lot of work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, old business, uh, B, Headwaters update, Joan?
Um, I'll just give you a quick, uh, update on what we've been doing. I'm sure everybody knows that Hermosa was a recipient of two FEMA grants. A brick grant, which is, uh, for critical drainage issues, and a brick, um, excuse me, direct technical assistant grant. Which is, um, it's not necessarily money, it's help that they'll be giving us in, uh, planning what we can do in our community to make it more resilient. Eliminate issues for flooding, different things like that. So we had a meeting with Headwaters over Zoom, and then yesterday, we had a Zoom meeting that included FEMA Regen8, Softco Emergency Management, Jim Poppin and Blair, and Headwaters. And, um, they will be doing an onsite visit in October. So they will be here October 8th and October 9th. And you will have one Zoom meeting to finalize all details before that time. They'll be here for two days, so day one is basically gonna be education. They have vulnerability exercises and capacity and needs exercises that we'll be going through to see just where our list of what we feel are problems and what we'd like to correct, how that fits in with what they do. And what exactly those things are. Day two will actually start early because they have all consented to join our Walk to School Day on Wednesday the night. So we'll be meeting at the post office for that. At 7:30 walk at 7:45 to the school. And we'll come back to the town office, have a low refreshment, and then do our walk audit, our drive audit to all the areas that, um, we can show them that we want improvements in. And, um, after that, of course lunch in between there somewhere. And then after that, come back to the town office to sign the memorandum of understanding. And then we will plan future meetings that will include, um, hopefully a large portion of our public and different stakeholders with businesses within the community, organizations within the community. And of course, we're hoping everybody shows up for both those days.
Okay, thank you very much, Joan. You've worked very hard on this and we really appreciate it. It is a great thing for the town.
And it's very interesting, I'm learning a lot.
Good, I'm glad you're enjoying it. That, that makes it way easier to do, doesn't it? All right, Jerry?
Yes, uh, I just had a, uh, Joan's input on this here has just been, like you said, just been great. One of the things that we, you know, uh, had a contract with her for a certain amount of money. Uh, I just really think that when it comes to budget time, we need to look serious at, at continuing that. Because it's.
Thank you, Jerry.
It's, uh, I think it's just a valuable thing. It's more than one board member could, could do and stay on top of, and I think she's done well at it.
Thank you.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, the other thing that I didn't mention is the, uh, the actual brick grant, which is dollars. Um, we have not had any meetings on yet.
Okay. I think, um, I, I would just like to mention that, uh, that one of these grants that we've gotten is, like, one of how many?
Oh, yes.
This was amazing.
Regen8 consists of five states, and of those five states, there were only nine towns selected to receive this grant. In the whole United States, there were only 93 communities selected to receive this. So yes, we were very lucky.
Thank you.
And I want to say that Jill worked hard on this also, she was prepared for all our meetings.
Well, I'll thank Jill tomorrow, but right now I'll say thank you to Jill and you. And, and that is, Joan, that, that is just awesome. I mean, our little community and 90 out of the whole United States, and we got it. That, this is, this is, this is a big deal, folks. And, um, it, it will help our town a lot in, in many ways, I do believe. So, thank you, Joan, very much.
Thank you for saying that.
What was the date of the signing?
Pardon me, Shannon?
What was the date of the signing when they're here to visit with the community?
That's the 8th and 9th of October. The signing will be the last thing on the 9th. Okay?
I thought that was the onsite review.
And afterwards, afterwards, we have to go, we have to come back to the office to sign it.
Okay.
Okay? And so if you, anybody, please, the walk to school date, as Joan just said, is October 9th. And we love participation in that also.
Well, especially with our guests that we'd like to see.
Yes.
Be able to show our support.
Yep, okay. Very good. That brings us to new business. The first line item is Daniel Milbrandt and the fine for dumping in the yard waste dumpster. Is that you, sir?
Sure is.
Well, hello.
Hello.
You've waited a long time for this discussion, I'm, I'm sorry.
I appreciate you guys rescheduling with me. I work out of town 90% of the month.
Okay.
Me being here today is a literal miracle.
Okay.
So I was hoping to not reschedule, the apprentice screwed something up, and I says, I'm never gonna make it. I haul ass and I got here, here I am to plead my case to the board. It is what it is, I understand there's a sign. I was under strict directives of my wife that, take those out of here. Those dumpsters are for residents' use, just throw them in there. I'm on it, don't tell me twice. So I just threw them in there afterwards, it was a couple of plastic totes. I mean, afterwards, I was just like, ah, what am I supposed to do? You know what I mean? And it was just like, and I know the whole thing got crazy. My boss got a crazy email about dumping construction trash, which it had nothing to do with construction or the company that I worked for, or him personally. It was just me, under directions from my wife directly, get those out of here, those are for residents' use, go use them.
Well, I'm sorry that your wife was.
And now I know better, and I will never put anything in there that's not a tree or a shrub.
We appreciate that, and I appreciate your humor.
I would appreciate some leniency on a new resident that just didn't pay attention and just kind of did a dumb thing.
Okay, so on that, that, that is the board's decision on, I mean, it is in the ordinance that he received a fine of, what is it? $500? A maximum of?
Up two.
Oh, up two, yeah, a maximum of 500. Um, my own belief, sir, is that, um.
Don't listen to Terry next time.
I presume Terry is your wife? So, but we, I believe that, um, the ordinance does state that we, and we need, um, have some sort of a fine here. So I would entertain a motion of a fine of a smaller than the, the maximum amount.
I make a motion that we fine him $50 and to redesign next time. We have more to go by now.
I suppose I can accept that.
You can accept that? Do I have a second to that motion?
Okay.
You got a second from Shannon?
Yeah, from Shannon.
Okay.
I'm just gonna abstain from this vote because I live next door.
You think you're safer that way?
For your information, Terry did, uh, message me and say that you were coming, that you were driving fast.
Did she? You mean Tammy?
Huh? Tammy? Yeah, I thought I said Terry, it's Tammy, right, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the board for the fine to be $50. All those in favor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and one abstention, thank you very much. And thank you, sir, for coming to the meeting.
And furthermore, do I just come down here and pay that during business hours?
Yes.
Okay, cash is acceptable?
Cash is acceptable, if you wanted to pay it tonight, we'd let Terry come back and get you a receipt and do it, if you want to do it tonight.
No, that's fine, I'll just swing by, I'll be, I'll be around tomorrow, so I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you so much for coming to the meeting, I really appreciate it. I, I don't think I've ever seen you at a meeting, so I'm sure you learned.
Never here at work out of town.
I'm sure you've learned a little bit about your town tonight.
Yeah, great, very informational.
Good, very good. All right, next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the Custer County meeting update, I didn't go last meeting because there wasn't, uh, anything that really pertained to us. I have the agenda that I thought was, that we thought was for tomorrow.
When she sent it, she had, she listed it as August 7th, but.
Okay.
But it doesn't have a date actually on the.
Would you double-check that first thing in the morning and then call me?
Okay.
And I'm not gonna, I don't want to drive up there if there's no meeting. And I, I definitely will be at the meeting that Anthony is speaking in the town's behalf, so, um, that will happen. Okay, so that brings us to C, Western Dakota Regional Water System Annual Meeting is September 5th. As I recall, we, somebody has been at most of those meetings. Dan, where, did you go to?
Right.
Yes, okay, and they are beneficial. Um, if for nothing else, just to learn what else is going on and, and whatnot, so, September 5th. Oh dang, Thursday. Is it Thursday?
Yep.
Would anybody like to volunteer to go to the, that meeting? Okay, I'll volunteer. Nobody else wants to go? I'll go, thank you.
Where's it at?
Box Elder.
Box Elder, I'll go, thank, that's all right. September 5th. At what time was it? Thank you, Linda.
Registration at 8, starts at 9.
Okay.
Till 3.
I'll put in 8:30. And, um, then I'll bring back a report on what was said or done or whatever. Uh, D, Resolution 07-2023, update the applicant agent.
So they had to do with that brick application and.
Oh, yes. So we need a new signature on that, we need a new, uh, new signer, new, uh, head of that. So, um, generally speaking, it's a board president or vice president. Joan?
Are you sure that you need to change it? Did they ask for it to be changed? Because that is who was president on the date that they asked for it to be signed. To do a new one now, I mean, you can't null, you don't want to nullify.
No, no, for future, for the future signatures.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying you don't want to change a resolution and have a new signature.
Right.
On it that's already been sent to the state. So you don't even need to do that until the next one comes out.
The next one comes out.
Because it's always the board president.
Okay, all right.
Unless they just.
The next year.
So, we'll.
Motion to remove that from the agenda?
Okay, we don't need motion anymore.
Well, but we didn't do anything with this.
But we discussed it.
Yeah, but you didn't vote on it.
It's gotta be a formal action.
Have to be some kind of formal, I mean, if we voted on it, so, yeah, it'd have to be some kind of formal action to say.
But we didn't, we're not doing anything formal, so.
Right, we're removing it, so we're just, we're not gonna.
Remove it from the agenda.
We're gonna remove it from the agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just remove it from the.
Can we get a, a motion? Get a motion to remove it.
Oh, I make a motion to remove it then.
Maybe speak to it.
So we have a second, I take it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's getting late, you guys, thank you. Okay, so E, Custer County Fair Association, um, permission to shut down Highway 40 east of the fairgrounds place, um, for the parade.
Looks like they went through the proper channels.
They just went through the proper channels, yes.
Are they going to make sure that they have somebody there, or how are they going to do that, I wonder?
I'm, we will find that out, Terry, you can just double-check on that, but I'm guessing with it.
By the law enforcement or?
Custer law enforcement here. Well, you see, they have to barricade it or whatever.
But it's highway, so, um, I would say we'd have to call the state highway department, not the highway.
That is, I think, the Custer County Fair Association's, uh, responsibility to do that. But we just need to make sure of what they have done and what they are going to do.
Okay.
Who's going to put the barricades up and enforce that. Joan?
Um, even though it's State Highway, we have always called Custer.
So they've always been here for them.
For the same grounds to school walk, to block both ends.
So...
This should be clearly required by the town and the traffic control conducted by local law enforcement. But do we need to forward this since we're requesting our contracted law enforcement to control that?
I think we just need to ask what they're, what they are planning on doing, and we'll... If we have to have a quick little meeting or whatever, or we could just make a motion now to approve what needs to be done with the county and the state to make sure that this happens for the parade.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
It's right here. It says, "Town, we will require traffic control conducted by local law enforcement or certified flaggers." So I would say they're going to have a certified flag.
They are.
Yes, that the fair board's going to have a certified flag.
We'll just make sure that that happens.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Jerry?
Yes, I remember from last year with the state fair that if you go back and look in the paperwork, and it's actually, it was an agenda item, we got something down. They submitted something down that came from the DOE Transportation that I had to sign. So I think if you go back and look at that, look what happened a year ago and what we had to sign, and it came down, we even had to have a special meeting to get that signed because it, in order for the fair to go. But that's just my input, so...
Yes, thank you. I...
It said "flaggers" there, so they evidently must have, that must have been what the guy told them.
I, there's no place for us to sign on the form that we got from them, so...
I read it as that it's our responsibility to provide that to local law enforcement. So wouldn't it be our responsibility to notify Custer that they're wanting this?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We just need to make sure. I, we cannot provide law enforcement because we have none, and they know that. This is a Custer County Fair, Custer County Fair.
Right, but they're going through us to go through them, I would think.
For informational purposes only, I think, but we will check into it and make sure that it is done properly. Jerry?
This is similar to the form last year, but I know that we had to, we had to sign something and do something, so...
Okay, we'll check in. All right, we'll check into it. Thank you. All right.
Did you vote on that?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you for reminding. That brings us to items from citizens. Any input? Jerry?
I'd just like to say thank you to you, Linda. I think you shared some of the meeting today very professionally, very equitable, and there's times where you had to say stop citizens, and you were consistent on doing that to all the citizens. I just want to say thanks for that. And I just want to say thank you to Shanna for calling in into the meeting. I'm glad that we have that capability now. And I know at one time in the past, I think it was even approved, this would have been way back then if Bernie did the research, there are good systems that can be purchased. And the amount of things that we do, especially now when we're going with all this brick stuff that's coming on, we need to have something better. Mics at the individual place, even maybe a mic that would hang on Chuck because he's one of the presenters. And because it is important that they have the ability to call in.
Yes.
And it's important that they can hear. And until that happens, one of the things that I found out is if, that's the town phone you're using there? One thing I found out is that, say she calls your cell phone. The cell phones go through so much better than the telephone.
Clearer, clearer and louder? Now, that is a good point. Thank you.
That would be an interim measure, but I really think the town should get the speaker system.
Put that on the budget, on the budget. See if we can fit that in there somewhere. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your input. Anybody else? Nope, quiet. Any trustee input tonight?
I have some.
You have some? Go ahead, Shanna.
The office input or request, but should we add the reading of a resolution for that tax initiative to our next agenda so that we can pass it?
Reading for what?
Isn't that what they were asking us to?
They were at, yeah, they had a, they had a draft or a resolution we could do if we wanted to support that.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
I can put that on the next.
On the next agenda. Thank you for the reminder on that, Shanna. Good point.
And then I also wanted to know, other than, you know, trying to find some Zoom equipment that works to be able to call in, you had mentioned something about paying a service for the year to have more than an hour.
We actually have Teams with our, with our office. I don't know, is that something you're, if I, I mean, I was going to call you, maybe have you try it tomorrow, because that's something we get already with our Office 365 that we pay for. It's a lot like Zoom, but it's called Teams.
Okay, well, whatever works.
Yeah.
I'm just saying since it's in our ordinance to allow it, we need to be able to...
Access it.
Use it.
Yeah, access it properly, yes.
And if we need to budget for that in the next budget budget.
Yep.
Well, since we already paid for that Teams, I think we should use a part of our office 365.
Yep, if that works, then that's...
Yeah, and it should work, but I was going to have you try it sometime.
Okay, sure.
So I'll call you.
And then as far as the board position opening up?
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd be worth a call to the Secretary of State since we're still within 60 days of the election, if that makes any difference on appointing someone that ran, like Aaron did, or if we have, if we go ahead and publish it, or how that works.
Well, that's a good point. Joan?
You have to accept the resignation before you move on and request letters of interest.
Okay, well, maybe that needs to be added to the next agenda, but we also need to discuss or find out if there is a limit or something on that. And I also wanted to find out about the board laptops that are available. I'd like to get one of those if possible.
Okay.
Because I'm better at typing than I am handwriting.
Okay.
By the end of the meeting, I can't even read my own notes.
Yeah, okay.
And the last one, I guess, I, personally, my input is I was very disappointed with Vicky's choice to resign. I, I don't feel that we are a disrespectful or misguided board at all. I think we all do the best we can. I think we have good ideas. I think everyone brings something to the table. I think that saying that we need to look at removing bushes from our ordinance and let's not enforce bushes since we never have before from our abatement is not causing us to be...
I, I'm going to stop you right there, Shanna. I appreciate your input on that and your feelings on that, and...
Nonconformity. That's what I want to say. Nonconformity to ordinance is what's specific wording.
Yep.
I do have a right for my input, Linda.
I, I know that. You do have the right for your input, and I...
I've heard my hand that several times tonight that I haven't been called on, so I'm using it for my input, and that is my input. I'm very disappointed that she would say that about this board. I'll leave it at that, I guess.
Well, that was her personal opinion, and she has resigned, and, well, we have not accepted.
That's my personal opinion. That's just the input.
We have not accepted it yet, but thank you for your input. Was there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Kent has some input tonight?
Yeah, this might be point of order because obviously I'm not a trustee, and, but with regard to back on legal, there were a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is that I did draft a sign to post in the office. I don't know if you had much of a chance to look at that, Terry, yet.
I did, yep.
If it seems satisfactory, if you have a recommended change, just let me know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Phil might look that one up.
What it essentially is that the town staff has the authority to ask anyone to leave if they, in their sole discretion, determine that they're being disruptive, disrespectful, threatening, anything like that. And if they refuse to leave, then that event would be considered trespass or even disorderly conduct, and can be enforced accordingly with regard to having them, having them removed by law enforcement necessary. So there's that. That's up. The other thing is, with regard to a couple of comments during the legal with regard to my proposal, is that I want to assure the board, I had an excellent relationship, first name relationship basis with, I had for years with Marty Jack of the Attorney General's office, and a very good relationship with any of his deputies. And most state agencies are assigned a deputy attorney general, and maintained an excellent relationship with her on the whole, a whole deal with, with the DNR last year, and involved two years ago, and in fact, negotiated a discount, a pretty significant discount and fines for a while. And then as to trustee Ferguson's comment about conflict of interest, if there was one, or an apparent conflict of interest, I have a duty number one to dispose of it, so if I had, if I know one, I will. If I thought I had a significant, or any conflict of interest, probably just I can submit, because it really isn't worth it to me. But I'm not aware of a conflict of interest that exists or anything. I have been pretty frank with everybody when it comes to getting legal opinion, everybody around the table, including enough save the Dicky. I think I've got a good relationship with everybody on the board. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, any other trustee input? I have some. The Custer County Fair is this weekend. Normally speaking, at the, at the parade, the town board president and vice president are in the parade. You didn't know that, did you?
You probably don't want to be in there.
Would you like to drive my convertible?
That's it, that's it.
Would you like to drive my convertible?
Would I like to drive your convertible?
Yes, I would donate it for you guys to drive it down through the parade with you.
Wow, I never even gave that a thought. I was trying to figure out what we were going to ride in, and I was thinking that maybe Cal had something hidden in his backyard there that I didn't know about.
I would let you guys ride in, drive my convertible.
Oh, you're a sweetheart. We would appreciate that.
What kind of license?
Uh, the bubble gum machine.
I don't have a bubble gum license.
No, I would be happy to let you guys drive it down through the...
Thank you very much. I do have one thing where that is concerned. Always before, as I recall, it's just been a cardboard paper thing that is on the side. I, I would like to order a magnetic one, or whatever you can put on it and take it off, leave it in the office. So it's available for every year, and it doesn't need to say any names on it other than Town of Hermosa's president and vice president. And the names will be announced when it's down there, or if anybody's curious, they can call, you know? I, I think that would, it would just look better, and it would be nice to have it available at all times for any parade. We were not, we did not do the Custer parades, the two of those Discovery, Gold Discovery Days, and...
Fourth of July.
What?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July. I knew there was two. I just couldn't think of it. And that is something that has been done in the past, doesn't have to be, but it...
I didn't know it last year.
Yeah, it is our county, and so...
So you probably don't want to be magnetic.
Should we make a motion to prepay the credit cards by some candy?
Shanna, just a second. What was that? I didn't hear you.
Most cars don't have metal anymore.
Oh, yeah. So how do you do that?
My Ford truck's aluminum, and Corvus are fiberglass.
I think our doors are metal.
Boy, if they're not ferrous metal, magnesium.
Yeah, but you won't always have your car of it.
Yeah, right.
Well, yeah, that's very true.
Okay, Shanna, what was your comment there?
I have to, we need to make a motion to prepay, spend $100 on candy for this.
Oh. Okay, so how do we address this, Kent? Because it wasn't on the agenda. Either the sign, if we could get one in time, I don't know if it can be done in a few days, and the candy that we throw out.
I think it's a small enough expenditure that it's basically miscellaneous item.
Miscellaneous office staff?
The magnetic signs are not going to be very expensive.
Okay.
And neither is a couple giant bags of candy.
So we don't need a motion? We just, does everybody agree with this, the candy and the sign? Everybody agrees? Okay, thank you, Shanna. And in that aspect, I would like to thank Dan and Deb, because always in the past, it has just come out of their pockets, always. And for all...
We paid for ours last year.
All these years, okay, you paid for yours last year, but all the years past, the popsicles, the, everything was just out of their pockets, and thank you very much for that contributing to the town. We appreciate it. It seemed like I had other trustee input, but I can't think of what it was, so I guess we're done. We do not have need of an executive session tonight.
Should I make a motion? We adjourn this meeting at 9:07.
I have a little, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shanna, Shanna said aye too. Thank you all for coming tonight.